Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen meeting for September 4th, 2018. At this moment, I'd like to have an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, I'd like to see if there are any walk-ins. Mr. Darty.
For the record, my name is David Darty, 122 Gilson Road. This morning, when I dragged myself out of bed after a sleepless night, I told myself I would come in here and tell you once again, even though you've heard it so many times, of the problem that's out there with that wind turbine for me and my neighbors. Even though I know you've initiated testing, which is going to be close to a year ago, nothing has begun, really begun, in the testing process, other than the protocols and how they're going to do it. And you probably know how I feel about the testing protocols. You've gotten copies of my letters to the Department of Environmental Protection, to Martin Sueberg, and also to the Southeast Region. Now, I haven't got any answers back from them. Last night was particularly bad because, well, it was a hot night, one of the hottest nights of the year, humid. I can deal with the heat and the humidity. I don't like air conditioning, that's why I don't live in Florida in the summertime. But when I compound that last night, with the wind was southwest again from seven miles per hour, with the noise of that turbine, it's just too much for me. I have to take drugs to sleep, and I don't sleep very well with drugs, and I don't think I should have to take drugs. So I didn't want you to think that just because you've ordered testing, my neighbors and I are sleeping any better. And I didn't want you to become complacent of knowing that-
Mr. Darty, we are not complacent, okay? You keep coming in, and we appreciate you coming in, but I'm giving you two more minutes because it's the same song and dance you're saying. We're taking testing right now. You went out with Al Bangert. We found the locations. We cannot figure that out unless we get the optimum wind to be able to get the information. I know you want it all shut down. It doesn't matter which direction it comes from. And I know you like coming in here for TV and land for five minutes to be able to talk to us. Please bring something new to the table. I see that you put two letters into the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I encourage you to do that in order to change the noise regulations. But again, there's nothing that we can do, other than go through the testing, which we are doing, and we're doing it diligently. Please proceed.
Well, I'm not going to argue about the meaning of the word complacent. Perhaps it was a bit strong. What I'm trying to say is I don't think you should feel comfortable in the fact that nothing has been done, or has been done, or even the results of those tests may not be to your satisfaction.
That's a disagreement. I respectfully disagree. Things have been done, but you are entitled to your-
Been a lot of years that I've been coming in here, and nothing's been done. Anyway, you've heard it again. We're still not sleeping, and I'll let you do your other business.
Thank you.
But you haven't got rid of me yet.
Didn't say I wanted you to leave, Mr. Darty. I just want to make sure that when you come before us, you're bringing something new. These two letters are new, and that's the reason why I let you continue to talk, because I think it's a good thing of you trying to ask the Commonwealth, not the Town of Situate, to change the regulations, which are what they're based upon. I commend you for doing that.
Well, your good news is I'm leaving on the 20th of October.
We expect to see you back in the spring, I guarantee you.
You will.
Any other walk-ins, please? All right, seeing none. Just so I can stop you there before you get started. If anybody in TV and land, anybody here, hasn't voted, you have until eight o'clock, which is about 50 minutes, to go over to the high school and vote. So if you're still at home watching this, please make sure to get down to vote for the primaries. Please.
Okay, if I can. Steve B. Auckland, for the record. We have a zoning bylaw in town-
What's your address?
38 Lad's Way. We have a zoning bylaw in town that allows flexible open space developments. And when it was originally proposed, it had a provision that the open space could be owned by a homeowners' association, with a deed restriction on it, that it can't be further developed and has to remain open. And the town is involved in that deed restriction as well. For some reason, at a town meeting, they took out that provision and added a provision that says that the developers have to go to the state for a CR, a conservation restriction, which is an act of the legislature. The problem that's arising is, most of the open space developments in Situate are smaller developments, maybe 10 or 15 lot developments. So the amount of open space is maybe three to five acres, or six acres. And when you go to the state for a CR, you have to have somebody like the Wildland Trust hold the conservation restriction. They're not interested in holding conservation restrictions on such small pieces of property. So the developers are kind of caught in a catch-22. I develop property in town. I've done a number of the open space developments under the old provision, where we did let it go to the homeowners' association. And I'm trying to change the bylaw back the way that it was, so that we don't have to have a CR. And I know you guys have been going through that, the town people, trying to get CRs on some of the stuff that's been bought by the open space committee and things like that. It's not a simple thing to do. I think that the people in town like to see open space developments, where the developers will protect some of the open space. I'm trying to make it simpler for that to happen, the way that it was in 1998, when it was originally passed by town meeting. And I attempted to get 100 signatures, and I didn't want to bother people I didn't know, so I went mostly to people that I do know, to try to get this done as a citizen's petition. I'm in front of you now, asking if the selectmen would put this article on town meeting floor. I actually have about 94 signatures in here now, and if there's six or seven people behind me that want to sign it, maybe it can be a citizen's petition. But I think that the selectmen are aware that this is an issue in town, and I just hope that you guys would put it on town meeting floor.
I can't necessarily begin to a discussion, Steve, because it's walk-in, because it's not a part of the agenda. So that prevents us from discussing it from opening meeting.
If they could just save the article, that's fine.
The one thing that, when I talked to you last week about it, is I think it's an interesting idea. My only reservation is that, for special town meeting, I prefer to see zoning articles at annual town meeting, because of the people. I think it may have some merit. I'd have to look at how you're wording it, and how it impacts the current, because I personally feel that, you know, sometimes it's hard for the town to find CRs, just as you said. I'd rather keep it with the association and deed restricted, so that they're responsible, or the, whatever, it's a condominium, or if it's a homeowners' association, they're responsible for maintaining it going forward, without giving it to the town, taking off the tax rolls. But again, I don't know how else the board feels.
The only thing I could add to that, John, the wording is exactly word-for-word what was in the 1998 bylaw, word-for-word.
I haven't looked at it, 1998. So that's why I'm just saying, at this point, I would prefer to see it at the annual, so we can go through it a little bit better. But I don't know how else the board feels.
Is that the end of the world, if it waited till the spring?
I'd like to try and see, go to this town meeting. I mean, zoning articles are zoning articles. It's not, this doesn't change, it's not a huge change. In other words, we had it in this way, and it worked perfectly well. The language is exactly the same. I mean, if you just save space for the article, I'd be glad to come back and explain it to everybody. There is one advantage to this particular one, to get it to go through now, and that's, and I'm not involved in the development, but it's next to the Hathley School, I think it's Curtis Estates. They are going to have an issue where they're not going to be able to get building permits, because they have nobody to take the open space on that development.
Just one other, have you been before planning or conservation?
Only private conversations with-
Members.
Members of the board, and everybody seems to be in favor of it. You know, there may be some people that might not be, but again, this is exactly what we had for years, and it worked perfectly.
Tony?
So why do you think it was taken out?
I have no idea. I mean, at one point, everybody thought these CRs, these conservation restrictions, were a really good thing to have. And I guess if you can get one, maybe it is a really good thing. But I, for one, who probably have most of the open space developments in town, can tell you I will not come in with another one if the bylaw doesn't get changed, because I have to know where my open space is going, or I have to be able to at least, you know, manage my open space. I don't, I think these guys got caught in it. They didn't see this provision in there, that it was taken out. And I don't think that that would be an open space development if they knew that. I think they would just come in with a conventional subdivision, and that provides no ability for buffers around for the neighbors and all that. I mean, I wouldn't have stood over and tried to get 100 signatures if this didn't make sense to do. I wouldn't waste my time.
Just to finish, I wouldn't vote in favor of doing that. There's a process for this. You know, there's planning, there's conservation, there's a lot of opinions that have to go into it before a developer comes before us and says, please change the law back to the way it was, that we changed it by mistake, whenever you're suggesting it was done. So-
That happens if you save the article space. It has to go to a public meeting with the planning board, and conservation has to chime in on that as well.
Yeah, and I think they would be the ones that present it to us, not you personally. So I think there's a process for it, and at the last minute, for us to save space on a meeting that we probably don't like doing these things on, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Anyone else? If not, I got to move on. I think you kind of get a sense of where we're at currently, Steve. You know, you've got more time maybe to find other people, six people or seven people, you probably can, but I would be more inclined to say come back. Because again, I see the chairman of the board over at Planning Board, and I'm like, they need to be involved. Everybody needs to be involved for it.
They will be involved. I mean, they have to have a public hearing.
It would be much easier for the town to go through the system, through the committees and the boards, and anticipating at the annual, than at this point, that's all.
One final question. Would there be enough time for the boards to-
Yes.
Review it?
I like you, Steve, but I'm not asking you.
And Jim, you know, who knows what complications are going to pop up? I find it hard to believe it was changed by accident.
There should be enough time for them to have their public hearing.
Right.
Whether there'd be enough time for the public hearing and a decision before the warrant went to print, that's another question. But there's sufficient time for the planning board at least to have their, publish their notice and their hearing. It's two weeks, right, Ann?
Yes.
So there's sufficient time for that. Whether or not it coincides with when we send the warrant off to the printer is a different question.
I just personally don't like doing zoning articles this fast. I think that's where we get ourselves into trouble, when we don't give it enough deliberation. So I think it should be on the annual.
So-
I don't want to waste your time anymore.
That's why I'm just saying, at least you have a gauge of it. If we don't see you at the special, you're welcome to come back in another walk-in at a future meeting to discuss that a little bit further, Steve. All right?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other walk-ins? All right. Seeing none, then I'm going to move on to report of the town administrator. Jim, good evening.
Good evening. Speaking of zoning, I'm going to inform the board tonight, I gave you the paperwork. The board received, in essence, a challenge to our zoning bylaws, as it relates to political signs. So Section 710-1D, the town zoning bylaw, states in part that political signs may be erected 30 days prior to the applicable election, and must be taken down within three days after such elections. Signs for candidates who win state fall primary elections may be made out for three days after the full general election. So whoever wins the primary tonight can leave their signs up till three days after the November election. The issue comes with independent candidates. Independent candidates are not on the primary ballot, so they have not put their signs up yet, because this is not the applicable election. Under the terms of that bylaw, they would have to wait till 30 days prior to the November election to put their signs up, while the candidates who are on the primary ballot have had their signs up since, in essence, tomorrow. A recent Supreme Court decision, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, 2015, I gave you Cindy Amira's review of that, speaks to that. In essence, the issue is you're giving a different look to the generals, the candidates on the primary ballot, than you are to the independent candidates. We have a compelling reason, or can make a compelling reason, for having restrictions on political signs, for aesthetic or other reasons. We would be hard-pressed to say that that only applies to the independent candidates. It does not apply to the general election candidates, who have had their signs up for the past 30 days. In response to that, council has given us an opinion. Both myself, the town clerk, and Bob Vogel, the zoning enforcement officer, concurred in that opinion, that that bylaw will have to be changed. In the interim, independent candidates have been notified that they will be able to put their signs up effective tomorrow for the November election. We do have time, because this is the only election where it comes up, it won't come up in a town election, we do have time that we'll be able to send out the planning board, speak to them about a change of that bylaw, and put it on the annual town meeting in April. So it won't be on this ballot, but just let the board know, independent candidates will be able to put their signs up, starting tomorrow, despite the fact the bylaw speaks differently. I gave you the candidate's letter, and also the opinion from town council, so you have those for your pleasure.
Question? Good.
Two. Sorry?
I just said, no, it makes sense to me.
Yeah. Two, just to let people know, the ADA Evaluation and Transition Plan, RFP, has been finalized and is up. This is an update to our 1995 ADA transition plan. This goes through every building, every town facility, sidewalks, looks at the ADA compliance, where we might have problems, and gives us a pathway towards correcting those. So that's up and out. We do have money for that. We hope it comes in, 70,000? 50. So we're hoping that comes in under the 50,000. Last thing, because now we have a full agenda. I know the board likes to have grant announcements. Last week was a banner week for grants for the Town of Situate. We received 15,400 from the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, for the town's recycling dividends program, used to promote and encourage recycling in Situate. The Seaport Economic Council, for those of you who follow me on Twitter, gave us a $550,000, $500 grant, to be split with the Town of Marshfield, for dredging the mouth of the South River. As we've discussed in the past, you know, the Fourth Cliff with the Air Force, the end of that, most of that ended up in the South River mouth this winter. The Harbor Masses, the Marine Patrol, have both testified to me about the issue with navigation in that mouth right now. The town has already appropriated our share. Marshfield is appropriated this year. The total cost is about 1.1 million. The state's going to pick up half of that. So that is very good for us. It solves a lot of problems, saves us some money. It helps the fishermen and the boaters down in the South River. Finally, I'm pleased to announce the town has received notice that we have in fact been awarded our second federal grant for the Situate FACS Coalition, to continue our drug and alcohol awareness programs and education programs. This is tremendously important in light of the town and the state's ongoing epidemic crisis. This is a $125,000 grant annually, for five years-
Yay!
-for a grant total of $625,000.
That's awesome.
This goes along with what we call in-kind donations, that the town makes through town staff time and things like that. So in the past week, the town has received over $900,000 in grant awards, if you only count half of the dredging award. Since July 1st, we've received $1,165,878.58 in grants. And since January 1st, that figure is $2,652,165,58. So the staff here is really doing an excellent job finding these, chasing them down, and more importantly, getting awarded them. And my thanks to Nancy for actually putting those in a form that I can understand and report back to you. So, good week for grants. We're still going. As you're aware, we have that $2.8 million Mass Works grant that's out there. We're hoping we're going to get some word on that fairly quickly.
Questions from the board? Karen?
Just a couple. Remind me, what's the timing for the dredging work? Do we have that yet, or is it still?
The permits are almost completed. I think we're waiting back. There was one comment that we had to make back to them on the permitting, related to why we can't use that dredge material on Hummer Rock. Two reasons. One, it's not suitable. It's not the cobble that we need. And two, the permits don't line up. We're permitted for the South River. We're not permitted for Hummer Rock right now, so we can't wait. So it'll be this winter.
Okay. And did we, was this year fiscal year, FACS budget, we had staff in there as well, right?
Yes, 75,000. About 75,000. Yep, we'll be able to remove that and use the grant money for that.
That's great. Great. That's it.
So.
No, it's great news.
Yeah, everybody does a fantastic job with that, and that's, and that's it, though. The second five-year after that, you're on, you're on, you can't get any more of those grants.
Yeah, but we didn't think we were going to get that, so that's fabulous.
So, between the two of them, it's, you know, it's $1,250,000 will be received from the federal government in a 10-year period, run that program. So that's really good. And again, congratulations, Dan Murray, and I know Nancy does a lot of work on that too, so the staff to put that together. Really, the staff here spends a lot of time chasing grants and trying to get grants, so it's impressive what they've been able to do.
Thank you, Jim.
Just a note on that, sorry, John. You know, the reason the FACS got that also is because they're a great program. They're setting state policy, and they're really having a huge impact, not on Situate, but the whole state, so.
Yeah, they really are a model. For a lot of towns come down here, look at our FACS program, to see how it runs, because they want to set up their own, and see what we do. So it really has become a model, not just on the North Shore, but the entire state.
That's great. Good job. Anyone else?
All right. Anything else, Jim?
No, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
So let's move on. We're going to move on to review the CPC Warren articles. We have Gary Meyerson, Chair. Gary, good evening.
Good evening. Gary Meyerson, 26 Summer Street, if that matters. Just one thing, we did have a reorganization of CPC, obviously, on the chair. I replaced Karen. Dan Fenley is the vice chair. Also, Steve Coulter stepped down as housing liaison, and he was replaced by Tammy Durante. So, we have two, I sent you guys a bunch of information. If you couldn't read the files, let me know. Two articles we have, and I sent you another application as an FYI, if you have any questions, that's fine. The first one is additional funding for Roach Field parking lot. As you probably remember, we approved, the town approved 89,000-odd last special town meeting, I believe. And mostly due to the stormwater bylaws, we have to, we've come, they've come back for more funding, about 80,000. Situate baseball's also kicking in, I think 7,500. So, you know, and again, when I looked over everything, it's almost all due to the bylaw, sorry, the stormwater bylaws, so.
What has to be done differently?
One more question?
What has to be done differently for the price doubling? Is it the-
Yeah, Fenley, and other project. So basically, they have to put, for that mentioned, for the stormwater, they have to build, and I'm not sure of the technical names, but there are concrete structures that they have to build, both in the back parking lot, and where they relocated the front parking lot. Some area in the front by the street has to have some concrete structures as well, the handle runoff.
So is there any actual drainage work, or is it just the-
I don't believe-
It's just the-
The handle runoff, the way they designed one, stormwater.
So if you look, I provided an aerial map with lines on it. It's probably three or four pages in. Really, what you're protecting is, you know, the train tracks, effectively, out of this. And it's something that I think, at some point, we're going to need to look at as a town, you know, how this bylaw affects, you know, different projects, you know, and is there a way to, you know, if it's not really, if runoff really happens, and it's not really hurting anything, do we need to, do we need to put this in? So, so that's one of them. You want me to keep going, or?
I just have a question, because I agree with you on that point, Gary. Was it, why was it missing from the estimation, you know? Why do we, that's what I'm curious, as to why we didn't anticipate the additional stormwater design fees at the time that your engineering group gave you that estimation?
I did explain that, sure. So when we got the original quotes, and when, I mean, you went in front of every committee, I don't think anybody realized there is a third condition of having, requiring stormwater, drain water, drainage. And it was never brought up. We didn't get quotes for it, when we went out the first round of funding, and after going through the review with, I'd say, six different committees in the town.
Didn't you go through conservation? I would imagine you would have, yeah. And I'm not here to, you know, throw stones. I'm just wondering where the process, where we dropped the ball, that we didn't have this upfront.
It seems like it literally fell through, you know, it was messed-
Is the third provision of the bylaw, the stormwater drainage, that we got caught in? So it never brought up, so we did the design, when the design came out, I asked, you know, is this absolutely necessary, and is required by the bylaw?
Would it be, would it be D and if we use reprocessed asphalt? And that, I'm just throwing that out there.
As opposed to gravel?
Oh, it's gravel parking lot?
It's gravel. It's the same, it's basically the same.
Yeah, no, sure, it would be. I just assumed it was asphalt.
It's the way the bylaws, you look at the bylaw, percentage increase in parking, that requires drainage and stormwater runoff.
Just thought it was-
No, I think everyone thought, just like you did, Sean, that you're putting gravel in as a parking lot, you're improving the drainage, effectively, right? But the bylaw kind of traps, you know, wherever it doesn't meet those three conditions.
Okay, so, from here, you're looking for an additional 80,000? 89,300?
Oh, 80,000.
80,000, okay.
Okay.
All right. And the second one that you have?
The second one is Wampatuck Playground, Community Playground Project. It is, and as you can see from the paperwork, that the, and I think there's a bunch of Wampatuckians back here somewhere.
Is that a thing?
Yeah, they're, they're always at every meeting. The, their, their project is to replace the playground. It's really dilapidated. I was over there the other day. It's the one, when you drive by, it's right on the right, you can see it on the road. I think it's about 30 years old, the playground, or thereabouts. The project, they're projecting a $300,000 cost for the project. The Wampatuck PTO is putting in 30,000, which is quite a bit for, you know, quite a bit, a chunk of change for a PTO to put up. The equipment they're putting in has a very long lifespan. It's very similar to the Hathley equipment. And if everyone remembers, I think the parents put that in 15 years ago, 13 years ago, and that equipment still looks brand new. They are also doing a port-in-place surface, so that should help with costs, you know, like replacing chips and different maintenance costs over time. We have not voted on this. This will be up for a vote on the 10th, from us.
Questions?
How about maintenance, Gary, going forward? One of the concerns I have is, you know, it's going to be at the school, and what we find is that, when it's on school property, who's going to maintain it? If it's not getting maintained, in 10, 15, 20 years, equipment becomes, you know-
Correct.
-and potentially problematic. So is there any discussion as to how that's going to be maintained?
That's exactly the same question, the first question that came up with us. And stormwater was the second one. The, according to the Wampatuck people, and maybe it was Terry, or you can probably answer that better than me, most of this equipment, the equipment itself is more or less, I don't want to say maintenance-free, but very low maintenance. I don't think that, I don't think they do much to the Hathley equipment. The surface itself, I believe, is warranted for five to seven years. So I don't think we have to worry about that. It's reducing maintenance, because you don't have to replace wood chips every year. I think as far as sanitation, it's probably no different than what they're doing now, over there. You know, it's probably just, I'm guessing it's the custodial staff, but I don't know. What do you know?
Might not be doing much.
I'd have to check with my guys. I mean, the biggest maintenance is the end of whatever.
Right. Right. So they're, they're looking for 270,000 of the total 300,000.
And are they going to change any of the parking, or anything like that, just so the same thing doesn't happen, what you just mentioned?
No. I'll double-check that. I don't think any parking's changing, right? No. No.
Great.
It's going to be, it's going to be on the same, I believe-
Footprint.
Exactly the same footprint. Nothing's changing.
I mean, we know, we just built one in North Situate. It's expensive to make playgrounds. I love the fact that the PTO is participating at such a high level. And like Gary said, it's probably at least 30 years old, and is probably in need of repair.
You know, and I have to say, the North Situate playground is such a huge success. I don't know if anyone's driven by there, but it is packed all the time, that, I don't know, I think adding more playgrounds has got to be a good thing, in general.
Well, this is a good one, only because its location, it's really in the middle of a huge neighborhood, both on Shore Acres and Sand Hills, as well as-
Egypt Park.
Egypt Park. So I'm like, it's the center, the hub, if you will. So I think it's a great location for it. I just only worry about, in the future, maintenance of it, that's all. And that's something Jim will have to figure out, I guess.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to be building all these playgrounds, you're going to have to build a maintenance line into somebody's budget. And, you know, I won't speak for Kevin, but his guys can maintain it, but he's going to need the money to do it. So you'll have to put some sort of maintenance line for playgrounds into the DPW budget. You don't need it now, they're new, but within a couple of years, you put five, 10, 15, 20.
That's right.
It'll grow over time, as they get older.
The other thing we did is, we asked the school to come up with a, an analysis of all their playgrounds. And I think I included that. Just because we didn't want to feel that, all right, we're replacing one, do we have, do they come back next year and have to replace another one? Can we do them all at once, you know, to save economies of scale? And it looks like their other playgrounds are in relatively good shape. So I'm not expecting them to come back anytime soon.
That's good. No, it's just, it's a model that's worked, you know, sharing the responsibility between CPC and the PTO, so that's great. My only comment, and I'm sure you already done this, is just to make sure that Wampatuck is staying within the school committee's plan for the future of the buildings, that they are consolidating or not consolidating and whatnot. And, you know, that's my only reservation, that I would want to make sure that that school's going to be there for the next 30 years.
That's something we asked. We had Ron at the, I believe, the first two meetings, and he told us that, I don't want to say it, but he told us that that one is not under consideration for that. consideration for that.
Okay.
So that was the first, I mean, maintenance, those are all the questions we asked, right? Because everyone knows they're doing a review of the school system.
Yeah, I'm sure the PTO would take on some level of maintenance also, you know, not expensive repair stuff, but at least maintaining the property and keeping it.
The PTO already has a maintenance line item for the current ones, right?
Yeah, I believe they do. It's somewhere in the paperwork, something about two-thousand dollars a year that they pump in.
Any other question? I actually had a question, Gary, on the other property. The CPC are looking at the McDonald property over in First Parrot, First Cliff. Is that something for this special, or what's, where's it?
The original intent, originally, when it came, it's been battered around several times amongst the town, the prices moved around. When it came down to five-ninety-nine, with the assistance of Brad Washman, who's not here, I believe is not here tonight, CPC got more involved. NOAA approached us with Wildlands Trust. And the project's very interesting. I've actually seen a NOAA project similar to this at Gateway National Park in Brooklyn, which is just fabulous. It's a much bigger scale, right? But the intricacies of this project, it's very fluid, right? There's a lot of moving parts. And when we discussed it at, I believe it was our last meeting, we had said, we would like these things, these questions answered, you know, go through these boards. There are, you probably know this better than me, there are, when you look at the deeds, they're interlocking properties amongst multiple families, sorry, the same family, but multiple people within the family. So we've asked to have a lawyer come back and give us an analysis on the title before we go in, as opposed to afterwards, when we find out that we've encumbered a half-a-million dollars and it's sitting there for five years, because there's title issues. I'm not saying there is title issues.
Well, if you need, if you need, maybe, Jim, we can have town council take a look at that, if that engaging lawyer, at least through town, to make sure that the property and the titles are sufficient.
They're having their lawyer do it. And we just got some of the title bits back, but not the whole thing. So what I, what I expressed was that I would, and I believe this is what the board also expressed at the last meeting, we believe it's better to get it done right.
I agree.
And not rush it and find out that there is something wrong, or, you know, what's gonna happen with the fire hydrant that you can see out there, right? That's gonna have, have to be dealt with, right? What's gonna happen with the roads? Maybe Mother Nature will take out the street, I don't know, right? So there are a lot of different things that we have to consider. You gotta remember, the project, the price does not include improvements to do what NOAA want, would like to do with it, all right? Potentially, I mean, town can decide what can get done with it. There is a lot of support. I do believe it is a worthy project. I just don't think it's quite ready yet. Okay? Fall, very good chance. Nope.
Sorry.
No, no, I don't have any.
Is NOAA going, or is part of the conversation about splitting investment in this property? Or is that, is that one of the moving parts? Is just cost-sharing for improvements or things like that?
I don't wanna say it's, it's a moving part. That would be after the fact, when NOAA, NOAA has told us that they can potentially get grants to do some of the, to cover some of the costs of a boardwalk trail system going through. And of course, we could potentially maybe connect it to the Maritime Center along the way. All right? Which is, would be the perfect thing, because then you can have parking on both sides. There you go.
So the, so the consideration is for us, the town, to purchase it, and then work and go and figure partnerships after the fact?
Right. And then, once we buy it and we determine a price, and if you look at the, the paperwork I sent you, there is dual valuation on this property.
Yes.
And so that's one of the, the things we're trying to work through. If, after we're done, let's assume we buy the property at whatever price, there's gonna be another cost, all right? I'm assuming that if we decide to improve, improve it, to make it useful to whoever wants to use it, right? So if we buy into what NOAA wants to do with it, there is gonna be another cost. There's potentially gonna be another cost just to rectify whatever conservation issues that are, that are on there right now. So those are the things we need to fleece out prior, because otherwise, we're gonna be here going, oh, we need another half a million dollars.
No, no, it makes sense. You, you gotta make sure that we do the due diligence and understand fully the, the cost. I think it's a great opportunity, and I think, you know, I look forward to hearing more, the board would, about it. Very good. Anything else?
Nope. Did you have any questions on the financials? They're pretty straightforward.
Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now we're gonna move on to a seven-thirty discussion vote, outdoor entertainment permit for three-twenty-three Country Way for September eighth, from six to ten P M. Live band music. Andrea, good evening. If you could just give us name and address for the record here.
My name is Andrea Scott. I live at three-twenty-three Country Way.
You're having an Irish band music, or something going on?
Yeah, we're having a birthday party. It's a surprise, so I'm hoping my husband isn't watching television or anything like this.
No one's home.
That's okay, he's not, he's not. But, so it's his sixtieth birthday party, and we have a little Irish band. We have a tin whistle, a mandolin, and a guitar.
Good.
For an hour and a half. And then we have a solo keyboard player for two hours.
Great.
Notified your butters, the neighbors?
Everybody.
Good. Anybody here to talk about it, complain about it, wanna join it? I entertain a motion if we have one.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Andrea Scott, two-thirty, uh, two, three-twenty-three Country Way for private party, shh, with live music on September eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from six P M. to ten P M.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Hopefully it's nice and sunny.
Go ahead.
Gonna move on to another seven-thirty-five discussion vote. Untold Brewery, first anniversary event, Matt Alder. Looking for two things, outdoor entertainment permit, as well as a one-day malt license. I know Matt, I'm actually across the street from him, so I'm gonna butter, so I'm just gonna recuse myself on this, on this matter, and I'll just turn this over to you.
Okay. Hi, Matt.
Hello.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So can you tell us a little bit about, we have your letter, so thank you. Doing a celebration for about three-hundred folks?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to, I believe it's coming up on a year, so we're, you know, we've, we've been very kinda humbled and honored by the support we've had from the community and the town and, you know, all our customers. So we wanna throw a little party to celebrate and kinda show our appreciation for the overwhelming support we've had over the past year. The idea is to have normal business hours on that day, Saturday, October thirteenth, so we operate from noon to ten P M., just like normal. Only this time, we are looking to expand the boundaries a little bit, so shut down the parking lot, and actually have some live music outside, and do the one-day malt liquor license, so still serve our beer, but let people walk around the parking lot and hopefully enjoy some, some music outside, weather permitting. So the idea with the parking is to use a shuttle to shuttle people from the MBTA lot. Talked to Situate Police today about getting a police detail that day to help.
You did?
Yeah, just help, you know, keep traffic at bay and, and keep everyone in line and off the streets, and just, I don't know, have a good, good old-fashioned fun time.
That was my biggest concern, looking at your plans, because you're blocking off your entire parking lot, right?
That's the idea, yeah.
And using that for folks to be there and celebrating.
Right. So we still wanna give people a convenient, safe way to get to the brewery.
And you're running a shuttle from the MBTA parking lot?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Will the police be just, what is the detail that you asked, requested? Was it for the full day? What were the, what were the hours?
Basically, it's got hours and pricing, so we probably start, we can do up to eight hours without incurring additional costs. So we'd probably do two to ten until we shut down, or possibly three to eleven, you know, two-thirty. Basically, an eight-hour period that covers the latter half, or the latter portion of the day.
And did you talk about where you would, they would be placed? Would they be placed at the front of the street, so folks aren't even going there? Because they, to minimize traffic going down that street?
We'd probably talk with them and defer to them on their judgment on, you know, best place to put someone.
That's what I, I think that's a small street, and I, I know your celebration is going to be a success. So I think, you know, any precautions that we can make to minimize the traffic that's even going down that street should be taken.
Yeah, absolutely.
Questions?
Will there be any parking there, on the street or anything?
We are planning to have a band and food truck for the day, so we probably let our vendors and the band park, and the parking lot, and employees as well, but we put them all out back.
So to Morris' point, the detail officer could tell the people the parking situation to keep them moving along and to go to the MBTA parking lot? For those that don't know, just show up.
Yeah, and we, you know, blast out there on social media and through our website, too, you know, sort of the details for the day, just to try to inform everybody as much as possible beforehand.
Yeah, I mean, similar, similar problems, you know, people will park anywhere. People don't like taking a shuttle. So that curve on Country Way is very dangerous, and people will park on it. So I think we've gotta get the police to get sawhorses out there and really make sure that people don't park in crazy paces that they will. So I'd, I'd like you and the police to just put some thought into that. You know, if you park back by Fitz Mill, that's not a problem, but if you're, if you're gonna park on Country Way, then it's a big problem.
Right.
So if you can just talk to them about really barricading off areas so people don't, I've seen people park, I mean, look at Rhodes Marina, they have things on Wednesday nights, people park on three-eight. All, all the way down. It's, it's dangerous.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a lot of precautions to keep everyone off that curve right there.
That's my only question, and only fears, I think, everybody else. And frankly, with a big event like that, the ten spaces you have wouldn't, you know, wouldn't make a big dent anyways. You'd have to have some other parking plans, so.
Absolutely.
Karen?
Did you, the butters are okay with the music outside?
We notified everyone and haven't heard.
Okay. What's the music, did you say? Oh, do you not wanna say?
Yeah, we're looking to get that a little bit of a surprise, but.
Okay, downtown. I just, I'm more concerned if it's something that's gonna be very amplified, that it is a residential area.
Yeah, the idea right now would be music six to nine. Let people hang out for another hour, close down at normal hours at ten o'clock.
Is there anybody here in the audience with regards to being a butter at all? No. I have one last question. Could we make it a, you know, residential access only, so we can really control the parking? I just know it's gonna be a really popular event. Is there a way for the police to do that, so just to allow?
Residents only.
Yeah, residents only can access that street, so we completely are not allowing patrons to park in there?
Yeah.
Think that'd be a conversation, you'd have to, to Tony's point, yeah, just so they could ask everybody.
Is that something that you would consider, just to do that, something like that with the police?
Sure, yeah, I mean, there's not a whole lot of places for them to park. I'd rather not upset our neighbors, so.
Yeah, okay. I think that's the point.
We wanna do right by everybody, for sure.
Okay, great. Any other questions for the entertainment? A motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Untold Brewery located at six Old Country Way for a band on Saturday, October thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from six P M. to eleven P M.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then is there a second motion here?
Uh, it seems that they're the same.
Just the one.
Well, there's a separate motion for a one-day malt license for the outdoor area at six Old Country Way.
Okay. I don't. Someone wanted, just wanna, uh?
Move to grant a outdoor malt and liquor license to Untold Brewery located at six Country Way for Saturday, October thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from six P M. to eleven P M. Oh, outdoor patio and parking lot. I don't know why it's not here.
Till eleven, or was it ten?
Yeah, noon to ten.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have the right, what's the time, Mari?
Twelve to ten.
Twelve to ten.
Twelve P M. to ten P M.
Okay. Move to, want me to do it again? Strike that. Move to grant an outdoor malt and liquor license for the parking lot and patio of Untold Brewery located at six Country Way on Saturday, October thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from twelve P M. to ten P M.
Second.
By Ms. Canfield. Seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that, but.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
John's gonna be selling.
All right, moving on to the next discussion. Discussion vote, water and sewer infrastructure update and action items. Kevin Cafde is here, DPW superintendent. This is in response to our meeting three weeks ago, where we had a number of individuals and residents at the Performing Arts Center discussing issues, trying to explain history, present and issue, ongoing issues that have been troubling, problematic to people. At that time, the board had indicated that we were going to put together action items, and what Jim did was to ask each of the board members to provide just a list of action items, priorities that each one of us gleaned from that meeting, as well as ideas of what we need to do going forward. Jim put that together for the board's benefit, and we have that, and then we have, you know, a follow-up from Kevin, Will, and Sean. Yeah, you might need to, yeah, if you don't mind. So why don't we do this? I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin, what's that? Kevin, why don't you start off, and then we'll go through the action items, just a follow-up from our last meeting.
Great. So what I can do is just give an update, and also not to leave sewer out. Sewer is listed on that also for a sewer update, so I, I have a little bit I can talk about sewer and bring the board up to speed where we are with sewer. Basically, the water department is, we're still having extremely high usage, we're up to about one-point-nine. The water plant was running till about one o'clock last night. You know, we're still looking at mid-July usage, just the way the weather has been good. We're hoping to see a cutback with kids going to school and everything else. One of the things we've been pushing for, we're working on the ice picking. We have a contract that, our bid actually going out, it's gonna be a bid opening on September eighteenth. And that's gonna be a contract for ice picking, and it gives us the ability to use it for the contract for one year, and then renewable for two additional years after that to continue our ice picking. We'll, we'll be coming before the board with the bid opening September eighteenth. We'll get on the next meeting agenda and get that contract awarded. Once that contract's awarded, we're hoping to start doing the ice picking in October, and get that started right away, mid-October. Once we get the contract signed, we can pin the schedule down, but that's our plan.
What's the, what's the priority with the, the ice picking that you intend to start in October, Kevin?
So what we're doing in, in, this was kinda the next thing, we had, we're awarding a contract a little later tonight to tie and bond for the continuation of the green a contract a little later tonight to tie in bond for the continuation of the green sand filter, and that's the completion of that building, building and structure. As part of that, we're doing a hydraulic study to see how that water will affect the system, which is an overall hydraulic study. We're also going to use that overall hydraulic study to see where the key areas are of where we should start with the ice picking. That's one of the things we'll do with tie-in bond, so we're not just picking two streets that, that, you know, we randomly think. We'll actually have some science behind it and be able to pick the particular areas that we think we have some prob, you know, that are some potential problems.
So Kevin, are they going to do a water study of the whole town?
It's, they'll do a hydraulic study of the whole town, yes, and that's part of that contract. So that hydraulic study can then be used in the future. We talked about doing the overall water and sewer reviews, so we'll use, we'll use that hydraulic study to base us further on and improve as we finish improving the water lines.
One quick question, I'm sorry, Kevin. So, but if we're going to start in October on ice picking, the hydraulic study won't be done by then, so.
Our plan is to have it done by then.
Oh, it can be done that quickly?
We're, I, I, Tie &amp; Bond has promised me they will, they will have it done.
Okay, great.
Um, we have a lot of the input data that we'll be able to get, so we're, we're planning on hopefully having that done.
Kevin, what, um, any thoughts on, after doing this ice picking, will it shorten the life of the water lines?
Will it shorten the life of the water lines? My understanding and from what I saw before, it won't shorten the life, and that's the beauty of the ice, there's no friction, it's not ripping out or damaging the pipes. If the pipe's damaged, and we run the ice down and it breaks, I mean, I haven't heard of that happening yet.
Yeah.
I don't think that's going to be an issue.
It's not that aggressive?
It's, it's not that aggressive. We did it before on Carmen Street, and we had the old lines and tried to clean it out, and then, you know, we looked at a couple different aspects of trying to pick it and clean it, but it didn't seem that aggressive, and it didn't seem like it'd be something that would break the pipes.
Right, okay.
Tony?
You know what, I'm going to wait, because the next one's really the ice, the study, so.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay. Um, we have also awarded a smaller.
I've got a question for you. When you said the green, sorry, the green sand filters for the building, what building are we talking about? That's not like, well, are we, what's?
No, that's, well, 17A, Tac Factory Pond Road. That's, that's the big one. That's, we have about a 60% design. This completes all the design work, all the permitting and everything else, the other contract that's coming up later. And that'll get that ready for construction documents, go out to bid and get everything all squared away on that.
Good.
A lot of that's with the building, meeting building codes and everything else, and getting architects involved to get that completed. It's not like a huge fancy building, but it is a building. Anything over that size is, is a structure.
Yep.
Um, I'm sorry.
Timing on that?
For the award?
No, like, so once you award it and then, like, construction to build out?
We will work with Tie &amp; Bond and get the contract as quickly as possible. I know Mike's behind me, looking at me with daggers, I can't get a.
Exact date?
He's to the side.
You said, you said within a month or two?
I think another point, too, is that we applied for the state revolving fund.
The SRF funding for that also.
So it's a reduced interest loan.
Okay.
It'll, there'll be a bunch of different trades involved in it, because they'll have electrical work to do, you know, plumbing work, obviously, and then the building structure itself, so.
Wouldn't the plan be to have this ready for the Springtown meeting for actual financing?
That's, that's what our plan was.
So the plan would be in April, we would actually ask for the money to construct this.
Okay.
Tony?
Yeah, I just, I misread the other one. The next one's about the rates. So about the actual water study that Tie &amp; Bond is going to do, are they going out to all locales of the town and actually taking a water sample and seeing what the levels of?
Sediment or brown water. No, that's, this is just a hydraulic study to have a computer-controlled model that sees the water, where it goes from the sources and how it gets there, and through which pipes. It's not a study to go into each individual.
So it's not testing the quality, it's just testing?
Not testing the quality, it's testing the flows.
So is it testing the pressure of the flow, so that you would know that these pipes are clogged, because it's not as strong there? I understand what we're doing.
Um.
This is the union.
That's not the.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So, my trade or tie and bond, what we do with the hydraulic model is, to answer some of your questions, yes, it will tell you the roughness of each pipe, you know, as it restricts flow, and help identify where the water goes, how fast it goes, where it slows down, and where likely, you know, deposition happens. And then that's going to be used in conjunction with the water, I don't think that's called complaint data, to try to draw correlations, so that, like Kevin said, it's not, we're not just picking some pipes. And some of the criteria that we use to select those is, you know, likelihood of cleaning one pipe, but then getting it such a dirty from the one next one, so we can think about who's, you know, how to, how to, you know, do that. And, so really, the hydraulic model helps you understand the pressures, the flows, the directions of travel, of the, you know, from the sources to be.
Do we, um, so are you going out to all the outer locations and measuring the velocity of the water?
No, the beauty is that, I guess there'll be everything else in all of the, this is going to be based on a GIS.
No, no.
Database, database, right? And we have all of the demand data from the water department, from what people actually use. You put that in the model, we load all these system pipes and network in there, which is largely built, and we are going to, and then the water department also has a inventory of fire flows, as they're in W. Town, that are actual tests on the system that we have tested, determined, you know, the response of the system to a point low. We use that to help calibrate the model, and then, as far as field data collection, you are going to deploy some data waters, some pressure waters at the storage tanks so that, because they're not continually recorded, so that we can see what the changes are. And then the software, the computer sort of balances it all out and determines, you know, what the conditions are, and then you look at different demand scenarios, so we can say, you know, all sources on, just this one source on, you know, what, what level, maximum day, minimum day, that kind of thing, and that, that's how you use it to evaluate the system. So it's, it's not, so I think where you're going is, it's not a, it's not like a laboratory house.
It sounds like a lot of hypothetical type. I mean, who knows what the water demand is over here? These users sprinkled, they don't use a sprinkler? Does it, is it demanding more water?
Well, the beauty that, you know, in the old days, I'll say, you would assume certain demands for, you know, this is a residential neighborhood, we'll assume this, this is a residential or commercial neighborhood, we'll assume that, but the beauty, one of the beauties of everything moving to a GIS background is we can take all that water data that we get from the water department, and it, they call it geocodes, it goes right to those locations on the map. So we know historically, I mean, we have years and years of data we can look at, what the demands have been in those neighborhoods, and that helps calibrate the model, and then you check it against the fire flows that we have. And, you know, it's the, I guess it's a standard hydraulic evaluation of a water system.
Okay. And the goal is to find out where you think the pressure is being inhibited, so you would run a pig through those lines to try and?
No, actually, and to the other gentleman's point, Mr. Harris, maybe about the pipes being damaged, there's different types of picking. In an older connotation, would have been, they would use deep pieces of diameters of pig with brushes and wires and stuff to really clean up the inside of the pipe. With the ice, their goal is to not remove what we call the tuberculosis there, because then it doesn't so much damage the pipe, but it would make re-corrosion, it opens new corrosion cells. So they, they actually modify the density of the ice to, based on that, because they have a torriculated line, they soften it a little bit, so it's not going to tear that. It's really just to push, you know, whatever's accumulated in there out, and it's not, so the restoring the hydraulic capacity of pipes is different from cleaning this deposition of material that we're seeing right now.
So if I understand what you said, it's not going to break the stuff off the sides, it's just going to push the sediment on the bottom out?
Correct. Correct. So you think about all those little nooks and crannies, right, where this stuff deposits, that ice fills that volume, and then when it goes, it just, it just, I guess, sweep is the word, it pushes it out. And it's not ice, like, ice cubes, it's like a coffee colada. If you filled a glass with it, you couldn't tell there was ice in it, it just took water. So these little granules that.
Like a slush pump.
Sort of form an intimate contact with the inside of the pipe.
Hmm. The pipes we've seen need, might need a little more than that, though. I mean, some of the stuff that Kevin's.
Well, I mean, a lot of those pipes have been replaced, and some of the pipes that we're doing, obviously, we're replacing the pipe on Oceanside and on Turner Road, so we're not going to run a pig down that. We're looking for the other ones that might have had sediment buildup. What we're hoping from the hydraulic study, we, we might have a certain section of roadway that we get a lot of brown water complaints, that we think there's a lot of sludge deposited in that line. Maybe it's because the pressure, where the pressure falls, or maybe it's because the depth of the pipe, or it's a low point in the system, and our hope is that we can run this pig through, remove all that sludge, and get that stuff out of the system. I, I say sludge, but, you know, what I'm talking about is, is the manganese or iron that might build up into it and get that out of it.
You mentioned Oceanside and Turner, and the reason why you're not sending down an ice pig is there?
We're going to replace that line. We're replacing those, and that'll be, you know, hopefully, April 1st, we'll be going out with that project. We're going to go out to bid in, in January, and we'll go forward with it.
Is that because of what you're saying, Mike, about you're trying to keep it, the diameter, just to clean the interior? You really don't want to scrape the interior, because then it would create a lot of corrosion that's coagulating or tuberculating the pipe?
No, well, so just to be clear, the pipes tuberculate over time, and that's a complex buildup of iron and different things. When, when the ice picking is done, you'll still have old pipes, right, and they'll still be in the same condition that they were hydraulically. It's just you're intentionally doing this to remove the, the offending material.
Yep.
So you're treating a symptom, it's not going to, you're not going to bring new pipes, and, you know, that's, that's a secondary consideration, and, you know, so for example, if you look at the line and you determine that, you know, there's a, a need for higher fire flow on a location, that's not going to fix that. That's just going to help, you know, the goal is to help fix, reduce the complaints, it's not to restore the pipes, that's all. Second thing, which is also, we're going to talk about as a capital.
Okay.
And we've done some cleaning and lining in the past. We did First Parish, we did parts of Countryway from Ronnie Schoen's going north, a few years, you know, years ago, maybe seven, eight years ago. And that's a much more aggressive system, where you scrape the pipes to bare metal, and then you come in afterwards and you line them with concrete and make the pipes like new. This isn't the same system, as Mike said, it's just the ice picking to get whatever buildup is in the system and try to remove it in that particular area. We're also working on an evaluation of the water treatment plant, and we're also looking, which we talked about before, is the Humrock Pressure Reduction Valve. We're hoping, you know, once we get into the fall, we'll start that and we'll get that in place. We didn't want to do it during the summer and have impacts to any of the businesses down there. If we want to get into the communications, are this here, we can do that, or I can give you a little update on what's going on in the sewer.
Why don't we stick to water right now? Why don't we do that, and then we'll transition to the sewer, if you don't mind? So, as you can see, the board went through a number of items, and I know the first category, we put them in categories, communication, capital investment funding, staffing, some miscellaneous questions that the board had actually asked, time, and I guess breaking it up between short-term and kind of long-term, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm. Any idea?
So, let's start with just the communications, then. There were some issues, obviously, the board was looking at with improved customer service, some way of, you know, it's not saying that, you know, people at the water department are not friendly or anything, I think it was just trying to get information out that's, shall we say, that information that the water department has, but also how better to maybe address issues, especially when it came to, like, the darker, the brown water that people were having, and what, what the water department could do. Did you have a chance to review this, these at all, or?
Um, I, I had looked at it today, Jim, and got me a copy today. Sean has not seen it yet, he hadn't had a chance.
The short-term stuff, some of the short-term things that the board had picked up from that meeting, we've done. We have a dedicated brown water line, 545-8880, that's brown water. We put the survey up. I'm talking with Steve Moeburg, our IT guy, about one of your suggestions about a color chart. I'm not sure that could be done, but we'll find out if it can be done. We'll put it on there. The second thing on that was posting that data on the website. We're going to start doing that on a monthly basis, so we'll take the data at the end of the month, we'll post it. I talked to Sean previously about this, and Sean can correct me, calls about very bad water. Generally, within 24 hours, Sean, someone returns their call and goes out to the house. Makes the call, goes out, they check the line going by, see what's going on, do what they can do. Obviously, you know, we can't go in the house, but a very bad, you know, I'm having brown water, it's kind of tepid, it's happened today. We log, it's black, it's dark brown. We are out there within 24 hours to check the line, check the street, see what's going on, do a little bit of flushing, we can't do a whole lot, obviously, because of our water situation, but to try to see if we can figure out what's going on at that particular location, at that particular time, that's causing that issue. So, those are a couple of the big things that the board had, had put on for communication. We really wanted to hit on those. There's some talk, and, and just to hit on them, about escalation, whether it escalates to me, whether it escalates to Kevin. It really should never get to me. In all honesty, it should be handled before it gets to me. When it should get to me, it should be something that they just can't handle, for whatever reason. There's a giant rock in the way, it's going to take money, we're going to have to do something beyond just what we can do. Or, you know, we have to shut off the whole neighborhood to do that, so it comes up to me, because we've got to let people know. But for the most part, you know, if it gets to Kevin, it should be handled, and for the most part, they all, and then Kevin comes and lets me know, this is what's happening. But we do have a process. Within 24 hours, someone gets out there, it goes back to Sean, if Sean can't handle it, it goes up to Kevin, and then the worst-case scenario is it'll come up to me, but for the most part, that'll all be handled before it gets to me. So residents should let us know through the line, through the website, I'll call them in regular business hours, I have really, really bad water, we'll get out there and we'll take a look at it.
So, so the residents should, should feel that if they have that brownish, coffee-colored water, that someone will be out to their, their house within 24 hours to take a look at it?
Yeah, we, we do the best we can, Tony. Obviously, today we had a water main break, so if someone called, we're not going to get there today, but.
But they'll be communicated with.
That'll be communicated, we'll be out there as soon as we can, we got something else going on that we're dealing with, but as soon as we can get someone out there, we'll send someone out and review that.
One, one question, Jim, for Sean, is the pace of, so the survey's up, people have a dedicated line, I know that you've been tracking that closely. Has the, sort of the user adoption of that been steady, or are people, you know, was there a big spike when we first put it up, and are people not reporting now, or how is that going?
There was a big spike in the beginning.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I haven't looked at it in the past couple of, the past few days.
We've had a few things going on.
Had some other problems that we're dealing with. But I believe Steve always sends the entire list.
Yeah.
From the very beginning on, and it has gone down quite a bit. Initially, there was a lot, and there are also a lot of incomplete responses. People, people get to a certain point where they say they have brown water, and then they just click out, they don't finish the survey. So it's not a completed survey. We're trying to work on that to figure out why that's happening.
Okay. But it is something that is useful to, if people do it consistently, is it a useful tool?
It has been a useful tool. We have gone out and have asked my guys to carry bottles with them, if they see a sign of it, because a lot of times, unfortunately, it's just like your car making a funny noise, and you bring it to the mechanic, it doesn't make the noise. We come out and they say, I swear it was brown yesterday, or it was black yesterday, and it's running crystal clear today. When they do see discolored water, they take a sample, we bring it back to our treatment plant, and we do in-house sampling on it. We have those results in a book at the treatment plant. I have not seen anything over any MCL violation or any suggested MCL by DEB.
One thing I, I'm sorry.
To answer another note, I think Anthony brought up earlier about sampling, we are, we do monthly sampling at four locations, I believe, from manganese in town, and it's pretty much was due to well 18, 18B on the Driftway. Since communications with the DEB, and I sent them the map that I think everybody saw at the meeting that showed all the data points from complaints year to year, they had asked They had asked for me to increase my sampling to some of the locations in Northern Situate and to some of the areas where there's clusters of complaints. So we're starting that this week. We added three more sampling locations and, uh, we'll continue to track that and see how that goes.
Two things on that. First, it would, um, Sean, would be, uh, when the complaints, like, obviously July 4th, that weekend, there, there was a high amount of complaints.
Yes.
Sampling would be helpful to have it immediately as opposed to the quarterly that you do it, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be very helpful that we have that. So then we understand what's going on in the system around. The other point I was gonna raise is that it would be helpful quarterly. That's one of the things I'd like to have as an update, but just the complaints, you know, like you say, I know that you've been busy the past week and that, but, you know, quarterly or a meeting, it'd be great to see the numbers, at least the board can see what's happening. Because I'm sure it's gonna spike and it's gonna go down, but at least it, it's helpful for the board to see what's, what's been going on.
Absolutely.
All right.
John, I would suggest maybe monthly because the quarter, I mean, there's really only a quarter when the water's bad. It's the summer, you know, when the, when the usage goes up, you know, or at least during those months, I think we should see it more frequently to see what's, you know, that May, June, July, August time period. That's why I was a little surprised that it's, you said the water is so high around Labor Day. Are people still watering their lawns? I mean.
Usually it's, it's a lot lower. It's, we think it's been the weather with the 98, you know, 90-degree weather, people are using a lot more water.
Yeah. That's surprising. But I think at least during those summer months, we should see it a little bit more frequently. I don't know if a month is too much, but at least whatever increment you can do quicker than a quarter. Because we may have missed the problem at that point.
Good point.
Okay. Absolutely. Uh, I do believe one of the problems, um, when we do have, you know, like a large outbreak of complaints or, um, a main break or something that causes a lot of disturbance, we get inundated at the, at the water department office with telephones, with the calls. We have two lines, um, if somebody calls and both lines are on, you get a busy signal. People hate to get the busy signal, so they immediately call Kevin. If for some reason Kevin's phone is busy, they just wanna go right up the line. So, I mean, we are working on a new phone system. We hadn't put it in our budget for this year. So I was hoping to have something to be able to say that we apologize, but all lines are busy. Could you leave a message?
Yeah, voicemail.
As soon as we can. Because I think people get frustrated when they have, I, I myself call in and get a busy signal.
Yeah, it makes sense.
They're getting a lot of calls.
Just one suggestion there. I know, like, if we call Comcast or something, if we change the message to say we're aware that Situate doesn't have, there's a problem there. If you say, we know there's a, a break on, then I think people from that area may not keep dialing the number because they'll know that there was a main break at the Mill Wharf and everything in this area is.
Impacted.
You know, impacted.
Ask that question.
Sure.
Sean, did you, um, I, did you already request funding for the phone system to be changed? Or is that next budget?
It's in my budget this year.
This year? Okay. Okay. So we'll get to that.
Oh, Labor Day's coming, he's got nothing to do, he can get all the projects.
No, I know it's been busy, but yeah, I get it.
Kevin, back to, I guess, the, uh, capital investment funding. We were talking about the ice picking, is what we're looking at, I guess. I just want to go down with the board, you know, I think Jim, you're kind of, both the two of you hit on it, creating, posting aggressive plan for flushing and piggy. Primarily, the pigging would be in the fall right now, once we get the hydrology. And then from the special town meeting.
Now in the fall, we'll get some more money. At the town meeting, we'll do some more in the spring along with flushing. We'll start the, the flushing program for the system where we actually have water to flush. So there's, you know, as I try to get my hands around this, there's the cause of the brown water, which is the stuff on the pipes. There's the source of that, which is the wells that need to be dealt with and the water that's coming out. And that's the longer term. So getting the pipe replacement done, getting the flushing done, getting the pigging done to deal with the cause of what's in the pipe and then start dealing with the source that's putting it back. Uh, and then that breaks into the short term, the long term. So the short term is the next 12 months, the ice picking, the flushing program, which is very important. And then next spring, summer, getting those last two miles of iron pipe replaced, which we're getting ready to go out. That's, I think, all permanent now, Kevin, isn't it?
It's all set to go.
That'll go out to bid.
The bidding now, good.
A little bit, we'll, we'll wait a little bit until the construction season winds down and the company start looking for their next year projects. We'll go out to bid on that, we'll get ready to go. And then it'll be one of the dependent, but around the first of April, the goal is that we'll be getting in the ground down there. Uh, starting to dig those up. And, um, once we get ready on that, though, that line will actually come out of service and people will get a temporary water line because that's an in-place replacement. Kevin, when I'm going too far, just throw something at me. Normally, we try to replace the water line next to the old water line. We can't do that here. So we'll actually have temporary water services down there, which will take that gunky crappy pipe out of service when we're starting the project as opposed to when the project's done. So people can see some relief from that.
Immediately.
Right away. Yeah, so.
So I'm sure anyone that's watching this is saying, is there anybody who can start in the fall? Regardless of the money, if we didn't care that it was gonna cost 1.3% more to, to do it quicker, is that even an option? No.
Yeah, I just don't think you can do that type of construction on Ocean View in the wintertime. I don't, I just don't think the weather is something that we even want to be dealing with.
So we couldn't get it done if we started in October by, it's more than a two-month project?
It's more than a two-month project. And I think Sean's thinking of Thanksgiving from about 20 years ago when they would, when they tried it in the, uh, in the fall.
Explodes water lines on the winter, Countryway? Yeah.
Also, we can't put up the temporary services, Tony, in the wintertime because they'll all freeze. Because they're above ground, so they can't be put in the wintertime. If you do get a storm, the plows are gonna go by and rip that all up. So it's gotta be when we're done.
So I gotta.
With the storms.
I gotta know what happened 20 years ago.
You were here, it wasn't that long ago, was it? So we're doing, were, were you, Chuck?
That was before my time. It was before my time, so.
Dr. Price could probably remember, but there was a temporary line service on Countryway while they were doing a water repair and the temperature dropped Thanksgiving morning and the lines froze. So, so people did not have water in the houses Thanksgiving morning.
Okay.
Is that a problem?
Not for me, because I was on Rachel Row, but it was for a lot of people.
All right, so we've got that. So, um, I think there were some other questions that were there, looking at Pope's Pond as a possibility, kind of a long, longer range issue. I'm just kinda going through these items that everybody put together. Anybody have any questions with respect to anything on the capital investment or the funding at this point?
Just a little bit about the, uh, exploring other capacities. I know that there was stuff done a few years ago. And it's one of those, where do we put it on, is important things to pick? But, um.
Right.
How do we, what's the right way to proceed in, in sort of exploring?
Well, we can get a new source right now, I believe.
Yeah, so, so there was a source over at the Cranberry Boggs that they looked at. And that was, that was a similar aquifer to what we're drawing from now. Our hope is to get somewhere over in the West End and tie into another aquifer first, maybe, you know, that's a coacid aquifer or the second aquifer, it's a different aquifer. Get into that and get some good water out of that. We're still working on Dolan, um, Dolan Well Field. We're going over some issues of the land back, I think it's in the 80s. You know, you have to have a 400-foot radius around there and the town was gonna take it all by eminent domain. Um, we're dealing with legal now because I don't know if that was ever recorded. That's something we're trying to figure out or if it was ever, you know, the legal essence of the eminent domain, if it was ever officially taken or not. And that's one of the issues we gotta square away before we go much further in the well. But that's something we'll square. And then I want, we're gonna explore, we'll have money in the next capital for exploring in the West End and seeing what we can come up with for another well.
All right, good.
I had those down in more long-range because they take so long and the permitting and stuff. So again, really, it's getting rid of what's causing the people the brown water. And that's the pipes and the flushing and all that stuff. So that people will only necessarily see brown water when we say, something happened. There was a water main break, there was a fire. So clean those pipes out and get it down to that level of, we know this happened, you're gonna experience brown water as opposed to, a lot of people turn their faucets on and we cause brown water. Uh, you just get it on a regular basis. And then there's the, the whole discussion about the health of the entire system, uh, the water treatment plant, the wells, the other pipes, pipe replacement, you know, the all, the whole. Really getting into long-range planning and expensive. You're gonna see on the warrant, uh, we're still running the numbers, but we have three projects for the water treatment plant this winter that are gonna need to be done. They can only be done in the winter when we can shut the water treatment plant off for periods of time. So what to do about the water treatment plant is going to be something we need to discuss because we only have one water treatment plant with one set of treatment facilities. So you can't take sand filter A offline and fix it while you use sand filter B because we only have sand filter A. There's no redundancy at all. So those are gonna be some longer range discussions that we're gonna have to talk about.
Soon. Soon.
Yeah.
More?
I just want to, um, I'd like to make sure a, a meeting does happen with the Situate Housing Authority before next spring. I'd like to put that on our schedule when we can.
Kevin, can you address that? This is the Wheeler.
Hold on, we'll get to that in a second. Just to go to the staffing, because I want to go in the order that we have it here.
Yep.
So, um, somebody had mentioned about grants, but we're gonna be looking to try to get an additional staff person for, um, the water department.
Yeah, one of the things that came out of the meeting was, uh, for lack of a better word, putting a point person on the brown water. I wouldn't call it a point person on the brown water, but given the vast number of projects that need to be done, I think it's becoming clear in my mind that Sean can't do all these or oversee these by himself. That we'll need to have some sort of assistant water superintendent. They're working on a job description. You know, in my head, it's almost Sean's everything in the plant, the other guy's everything not in the plant. But that, that's simplistic in my mind. But with all these pipe replacements, pipe cleaning, well work, plus what's going on in the treatment plant, plus the fact that Sean's responsible for making sure that everybody in town gets water that meets all the requirements on a daily basis, it's, it's getting to the point where I think it's, it's too much to juggle. The guys down there, I think I have to say, are doing tremendous work. They take a real amount of pride in what they do. And they are really, really working very hard to make sure that what they're putting out is the best quality they can put out given what they're working with. So, and that includes Sean. I just think, again, when you start adding, when we look at what we have ahead of us, I don't think we have the capacity internally to make sure we're handling all this.
Right.
And then having someone who's, who's still getting back to the residents.
Moving into the miscellaneous areas, I just thought, Moore, that's the first one that you were raising about Wheeler Park.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, just, you know, through one of the discussions, that Wheeler Park was an issue. So I know you had mentioned that your guys had been out there quite a few times. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're working with the housing authority and that we have some appropriate representation at those meetings to make sure we're collectively addressing that issue.
So I believe we were out there Thursday and Friday. And what we were doing is we were disconnecting the lines from the main and flushing them out from the water meter from the building itself and making sure those lines were clean. We spent a couple of days out there flushing and we were coming up with all crystal clear water on our end. We've replaced the service to, um.
Wheeler Park.
To Wheeler Park. And we've also replaced the water line on Common Street and on Stockbridge Road.
Okay.
So our water lines are, are in good shape.
Pretty good condition, right?
What we're worried about is potential residue built up in the pipe, in the buildings themselves, which would be something that the housing authority would, you know, maybe get a plumber or somebody else involved to flush their system. You know, a couple of the condos off the Driftway were having some problems. And we cleaned all our lines out, they were looking pretty good. And then they flushed the buildings and, and a lot of the problems, some of the problems went away.
So we have to have that conversation.
Yes, that's my point. I just want to have the conversation and make sure that they're taking that action on behalf of the residents. You know, they're part.
Can I ask one question?
Hang on one second, Sean.
Is Wheeler Park looped?
I don't believe it is.
I don't think he heard you, Sean.
Could we?
It's Wheeler Park looped.
No, I know, I didn't think Sean heard him.
Sean.
Oh, I don't believe so, no.
No. So one of the, one of the hopes with Wheeler Park, as we get everything cleaned out, is we put on our regular flushing schedule so we can go in there and open the hydrants and flush everything out of there. Where it is a dead end, that material's built up over the years.
Would it be easier to go to, if you, everyone through the woods to another development? I, I don't know. No, because the, no, the railroad track is right there.
You gotta, you have to go onto the railroad tracks and everything.
All right.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think Sean brought that up with the non-loop. I mean, if the pipes in the building are the problem, these people have brown water all the time. Eventually, the brown sludge has gotta come out. I mean, eventually, the pipes in the building have gotta be, you know, it's, they've gotta all go through the faucet at some point, right?
No, we agree with, we agree with you. And that's why we're scratching our head with it because we're looking at the service lines and we replaced the line on Common Street and, and Stockbridge Road, um, which are the main feeds for that. And maybe that's something we'll see with the hydraulic looping model, that it's getting water from another location. It's maybe creating a, um, you know, an uneven flow that could be causing something. We're not sure at this point, but, um, that's, that's where we are with, with that in, uh, Wheeler Park.
It doesn't seem to be the whole building. Most of these units or buildings have six units in them. My guys are going out and talking to everybody, you know, who lives there or anyone who's home at the time. And the majority of them have clean water. It's one particular unit here and there that gets discolored water. They go out and they, first thing they do is run the, you know, the, make sure the hydrant's clean. Then they go to the unit that's in question and meet maintenance out there, find out where the meter is and find the closest spigot, open that up full blast and take a sample from that and it's crystal clear. So.
So it's inside?
It's, it's internal, unfortunately, some of these, some of these units.
Okay.
I just want to help advocate to get that addressed.
So that's, that's something we looked at. And, um, we've also, we had, from some of the different addresses and some of the different residents that we've met with, we're looking at some of the, some of the causes for the brown water, of, of what we think the causes are. And there's some locations where, as we review it, we look and we realize, um, back in the day when they put the water line in the 50s, they ran the water line and you had to have a hydrant every 500 to 800 feet. So they put the hydrant 400 feet away from the dead end of the pipe. So you can't flush that last dead end because there's no hydrant there to the end. So the developers had split the difference so they'd get the full coverage of the hydrant and in turn, the water department never got the end valve to, to flush the line. So we're looking at a couple of locations where hopefully we can alleviate that for some of the neighborhoods by adding hydrants. That's one of the things we're looking at up off Aberdeen. There was a street there in particular, do you remember the one I was talking about? Was it Curtis?
Bonnie Breyer.
No.
Briarwood?
No.
No, Bonnie Breyer off Aberdeen, the dead end.
Bonnie Breyer had one, that was one of them. There were, there were two of them in that, in that neighborhood that we were looking at. Maybe we could put some hydrants in. We'll probably enough do a test pit, find out what's there for pipe, check the pipes circumference and make sure it can handle a hydrant. Because if it is a small undersized pipe, maybe that's why they did it. We'll compare that to our records and see what we can do. But that's, that's one solution, one potential solution for fixing some of the areas so that we can flush it. And our hope is by flushing it, we eliminate those sources.
Anybody, any other questions on the miscellaneous? I'm only asking because, um, some of these other ones at the time, we talked about by time, we've addressed. But I just want to make sure if anybody felt a question or any of their priorities weren't addressed.
I like, if I may interject.
Yeah, Sean.
I like number six in there.
Yeah.
The Water Resources Committee also touched on that at their last meeting about adding something.
Yep, that's right.
Onto their, our billing.
So this is, can a statement be added on water bill which includes how to?
How to report.
How to report.
For report brown water, et cetera, yeah?
You know, three means or at least three means available. We have the online survey with the hotline telephone number.
Yep.
We have our office that you can stop by or call us and come see us.
And then we can send something out in the mail. So is that something that we can, um, put together?
There is a spot in our new munis billing.
Perfect.
Bills, it gives us a spot.
Excellent. Good. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Is there any questions in the audience at all? Yes?
With all the projects that have been proposed, it's likely that we'll see a great increase in water service.
That's the next.
Uh, that's the next discussion.
Next agenda.
Next agenda.
So I'm gonna actually stop there unless, Tony?
I just have one, one question and it's kind of touchy or not. The biggest concern to me, or one of the biggest concerns is the people that are getting dark, dark water for an extended period of time. You know, sometimes it can happen for a day and we all live with it, everyone here lives with it. But someone that's getting it for four, five days in a row, that's unacceptable. And I don't know how we can identify those people and see what we can do to help them, whatever. The town buys them a filter, we some sort of baitment and we help them get something. Because no one should have to go through that level of brown water. And somehow in the survey, if we can identify someone, I mean, people come in and they put, put their pictures on. I don't know if they've had it for four hours or if they've had it for four days. If it's four days, it's.
Yeah.
You know, it's unacceptable. I think we all agree with that. So if somehow in your thought, you could figure out how to capture that, and if it is, those are extreme cases that we need to go help those citizens to another level. I mean, that's, and we kind of touch on it, but somehow we've gotta attack that and, and find that. That's it.
No, it's a good point. That is, that, that's what I'm always curious, like, how long have they had it? For like a few hours because of the rupture of a pipe or because there's a fire or whatever? Or is it like days on end? Or is it like days on end? Because to me, that's, that needs to be dealt with. Yeah, so. All right, so, we're going to stop there.
Becky.
Yes?
I think to that point, I think one of the biggest things we've been talking about is probably the only way for the water department to know will that brown water is reported accurately and as it's happening. So, I just think the more we can do to encourage them to do that, the more opportunities they have to do, unless people have issues with the survey and not being able to add multiple dates. So, if there's a way to kind of get the technology and to all work together in the ease of reporting, and people who have it multiple days in a row, they'll often want to call the water department every day. So, I don't really know what the solution is, but I just think it's important to get the message out that the water department really doesn't know unless we tell them about the issues, so the more we communicate with the residents.
I bet you if people knew that, Becky, that they're getting it like two days in a row, three days in a row, you know, obviously, you mentioned a water filter, that's a consideration. It's a question like, how do you fix the situation when the water's coming in, you know, very dark? You're not going to use it. So, I think if people know that, we need to know that, and then we need to take another step, I think people won't be afraid to call a second time or whatever and not be afraid and to communicate it. We need to know it, that's why.
And it can even be a timestamp photo, right? Everyone's got an iPhone that can say, "The 15th, here's a picture of it, the 16th, here's a picture of it," just so there's some evidence, because nobody wants brown water for two hours. But those are the people that we should literally go out there and do something immediately for.
I think to that end, if somebody does have it for four or five days, you know, that's, after a day or two days, we go out there and it's still brown, we're going to open up hydrants and try to do something.
Yeah.
We've left hydrants running at night, you know, just trickling to get the water out. If we have to add a hydrant to help blow something off, I mean, we're going to look at it and see what we can do. I mean, there's some streets legitimately that the pipe's so undersized, there's nothing we can do besides replacing the pipe. And that's something that'd be, we could put to the front of the list to get that pipe replaced. There are certain streets in town that have smaller galvanized pipes that are feeding, you know, 10, 12 houses on it without a hydrant on it, so there's no way for us to flush.
Right.
Those are the ones that are in our plans, our future plans to get replaced, but you know, it's like anything, there's, you can only replace so many things so quickly and at such a time. You know, but we are looking at it, and as we said, if it was a dead end for a street and we had to add a hydrant to help flush it, we'll add a hydrant to help flush it. We'll make that work.
Good. Any other que-- all right, so now, let's segue to sewer, although I wanted to say we did receive in our mail, Water First, their initiative, their mission and their aim, it's for everybody here, and I just want to at least let them know that that's a part of our discussion and our record here tonight, so. So, sewer, Kevin.
So, I'm sure that went a little longer than what everybody was expecting, so I'll go through fairly quickly with the sewer and just bring everybody up to date. Copper project's been going well, everything that we've put in place, we're under our four pots per billion, and we're complying with our permit, which is huge. We're hoping to get something from the DEP and finalize our whole copper issue and make it go away. Our rolling average is 1.31 million gallons per day. This month, we've been 1.9 million gallons per day, and just a reminder, our 80% value is the 1.28 million gallons per day. We have a skater project going on at Sand Hills Will's working on, he's doing a fantastic job on. Maintenance, they just completed a big project, and people are going to laugh when they hear it, but they completed the cleaning of the mud wells and got them down to crystal clear where you could see the concrete floor and sides and actually pressure washed it, which is probably the first time that's been done in 25 years at least, but it came out really nice. He's got pictures to prove it if anybody wants to see it.
Good.
Put them up on the site.
Put them up on the website, absolutely.
We've, you know, Will's also been working on grants recently, he's got an IT grant for about $58,000, and he's been working with Kevin Kelly on some energy improvement grants. And we've got our future regional sewer meeting on the 12th, so.
Good.
Just a little update, everybody's doing a great job over there, and we're going forward.
Good. Questions from the board on that?
Just to you guys, we don't doubt your efforts, you know. You didn't make this problem, and you guys are working really hard to resolve, and you're in a tough situation. So, we really appreciate all the work you're doing, and you want the water in the sewer to be at top capacity, just like we do, so we do appreciate your work.
I'm glad you said that.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I was just going to say that, Tony.
What is it?
All right, anyone else?
Just to, is there any update on the discussion with Hull and Cohasset? Has that progressed at all?
That's the 12th, 12th.
Oh, is that, oh, I'm sorry.
That's the meeting, yeah.
Disunderstood, thank you.
Two to four.
Any other questions on sewer? All right. So, why don't we do this? I'd like to circle back in about a month, you know, it's going to be the beginning of the quarter, as I say, to have a quarterly quick discussion, so plan that on our first meeting in October, just to kind of go back, just to see where we're at, see how things are. And other than that, then I guess we move on to the next agenda item, is that okay?
Yes.
All right. So, next one's going to be present, vote, discuss water and sewer rate study, and I assume everybody's, is Will and Shaun here for this, or just you?
We'll be here, we're going to hand it over to Mike.
Okay.
Mike from Time Bond has a presentation, they've been working on it, believe it not, for four months now, just getting it all together, so.
Good. Shaun, Will, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Shaun, you grab that easel.
Can you take the easel down?
Can you take the easel down, Roy? Oh, all right, I just thought Shaun was there, he could grab it.
Can I have one of those alt, please?
Maybe.
More would you like for?
No, thank you. Do I need one?
Are you sure?
My God. Why use these things?
So, Mike, you're here to tell us how to lower rates, right?
Give John four.
Give me six.
Can everybody see this, or do we need to turn off one of the lights?
Wouldn't be a bad idea.
How about if we turn off one of them?
Ruth, can you hit one of those?
Can you hit one of those? Yeah. That's one?
It's all, it's all we've done.
It's all done, all right.
That's fine.
Can you get that on TV? Perfect, all right.
It's a test to see if you know your alphabet.
Let me just, I had this working, goodness. One second here.
Any results? Any voting results?
Karen's going to walk down the hall and see what she's got.
Nothing yet.
Just checking.
Eight thirty.
Still looking.
Carol will know.
Ruth will know.
Not yet.
No, they do not.
Ruth, I'm impressed that you're here for our meeting and not over at the high school.
Thank you. Door.
All right, let's see if this works this time. All right.
Here we go.
So, good afternoon, good evening, my name is Mike Schrader, I'm with Time and Bond, and although these guys stepped back from the table, I just want you to know, this was, you know, a very collaborative, interactive effort with both Kevin, Will, Shaun, and of course Nancy. So, what we're going to talk about now is the rates and our evaluation. So, I wanted to go--
Just to start off though, Mike, this has been going on for a number of months.
Yeah, it has, it was before--
Before the whole--
Yeah, and it's been adapted and updated. And I also, given, you know, I think you want to keep this at 30 minutes, so I'm going to give you the overview. I think we can do it in enough detail, but, you know, we can always provide more information. So, what I wanted to do is talk about some of the rate, instead of rate study, it's really rate setting basics, how, what goes into the analysis, what the process looks like, how we do what we do, and then our recommendations, and then of course, customer impact. So, Situit has water and wastewater systems, as you know, that are operated as enterprise funds, and the basic premise of enterprise funds is cost recovery, so it takes the costs out of the general fund and associates it with just the water in the sewer, so that sewer pays for itself and water pays for itself through rates. And I think a lot of times, you know, this is the situation when we start with the expenses are outpacing the revenues, and I think a lot of people think that, you know, this is, what we want to be is sort of even, you know, cash in, cash out, but the truth is that we want to have some reserves, and that's an important part of the evaluation, and that's an important part of the rate setting process. So, when we talk about rate setting, it's really a big division problem, where at the top we have all the expenses, and at the bottom we have the users, and the rate setting process is a process to distribute those costs back to the users, about cost causation, things like that. So, when we talk about expenses, we're going to talk about operating expenses, debt, and capital. So, the premise of the whole analysis, the premise of your rates is to fully sustain the operation of your water and sewer enterprise, and by, I don't just mean operation, the, fund the enterprise itself, so it consists of operating capital and debt. So, operating, I'll go through this stuff kind of quick to get to the analysis, but we, there's a number of things that are included in there, labor, benefits, energy, chemicals. A lot of those things are out of your control, you know, they are set either by other contracts or by cost of the market. Debt is obviously your previous projects that you're paying off, and then capital are new projects, either to restore, rehabilitate, or expand your infrastructure. And when we talk about what drives rate increases, because this happens everywhere, so operating costs go up, everything goes up every year, labor and benefits go up more than a lot of other things, because they tend to go past the traditional cost escalation values. And then materials and equipment costs rise every day. Capital projects, so, you know, again, like we've said before, that Situit is facing this, some issues head on, but they're really the issues that everybody has, and that's aging infrastructure, deferred maintenance, more stringent regulatory requirements, so you listen to Will talk about his copper thing, that's because the rules changed. So, sometimes when we say you're not meeting your permit, it sounds like someone's doing something wrong, but really it's the permit changed and your technology was fixed. So, changing code requirements, things, you know, change around the infrastructure all the time. And then, you know, because it's Situit, everybody's favorite news channel show in the winter when we have our storms, you do have some interesting challenges here that are somewhat different because of your location, and that affects your infrastructure, we've seen water pipes get washed away, we've seen, you know, you have some challenging geography here in terms of your aquifers. So, however, when we get to capital improvements, that's usually the driver for a rate increase in any community, that's the need that comes up. And one of the things we're going to talk about is looking at water use and water consumption, and in a lot of communities, that's going down over time, and nationally, there was just a story that we're at our lowest level since the 1970s as far as water use goes. So, if you're a utility that bases its revenue on water use, and if your water use starts to decline slowly and your expenses are creeping up slowly, then you start to build this gap, this revenue gap over time, and that's one of the things that we look at and we'll talk about. But I did want to talk about the capital improvements, you know, this is an overview, it's the model itself, and I should say that this whole evaluation is based around electronic model, a spreadsheet model, that looks at all these different elements, we'll talk about some of this, but these are the high points on the water side, and when I say capital improvements, when we talk about these, these are funded in these rates that were, that we've developed. So, with water, looking at the basics of a water system, you have source quality and quantity, there's items in there for treatment at well 17A, we just talked about that, the filtration plant, potential treatment at well 18, because it had to be taken out of service because the manganese was too high. And that, we also, I heard you talk about new source development, well, one of the best, you know, a cost-effective way, rather than finding and developing a new source, can be treating an existing source and making it fully usable, able to be used up to its permit capacity. But as Kevin mentioned, new source development, we've got Dolan in the West End, looking at doing, you know, bringing on sources there. Storage, some of the challenges is there's no redundancy in, really in any of the system. So, and there's insufficient storage volume, so that's a challenge. And then in the distribution system, and this is how a water system works, it's source, it's treatment, distribution, and storage, and distribution, you know, we've talked about the water quality issues, we're talking about funding the picking and flushing, water main replacements, so they're almost finished with the cast iron replacements, but the next thing down the line is going to be the galvanized pipe that Kevin mentioned, those small diameter pipes that were used, you know, in the past, and then the, some of the AC mains are going to reach the end of their life and start to need replacement. So, you know, a water system or a sewer system is kind of like an old house, you're never done, you know, you fix the roof and the windows need to be replaced again, and it's a cycle. So, excuse me, we look at the operating expenses and maintenance, and I think this is something that people always want to see, because these are the base charges for the water system, they're not going up that much, they're going up, you know, two and a half, three percent a year, so. We add on top of that, existing debt, and it's a little hard when you start stacking things on each other, but it's sort of inevitable. You can see that the, you know, debt goes down over time, so you can see that that line's getting a little smaller, that's what we expect. But now we add on here, new debt, and when we talk about funding for those capital projects, we look at either debt or we look at rate, and the rates means it's basically funded out of reserves, but in, not in, strictly speaking, retained earnings, it's sort of the model uses a checkbook approach, where we look to build up the balance in the future, knowing full well that that money's not going to be just sitting there, you'll have to appropriate it in your budgets, it's, everything still happens the same way, you go to your town meeting, you set your warrants, you get your funding, and it will probably not come out of reserves at the time, but it would be come out of, it would be built into the operating cost, and you'll have the rates to pay for it, and that's sort of the concept here. So, we look at the debt coming on for those projects that we talked about, and we add on there some, the rate funded capital, so these are the smaller projects, and I worked with Nancy to decide, you know, what levels to, what things to fund by debt, how long to look at for a, for a term, that kind of thing, and we looked at interest rates and funding mechanisms a little bit. So, these projects are smaller, they're not, they're not big enough to, you know, warrant being put out to debt, so they're just paid for out of rates, and we can, you know, we can in the future get into more detail on that.
So, Mike, are these actually reflective of our numbers?
Yes, oh, this is all you, I'm sorry, this is your evaluation.
Because I know in the beginning, they were, it looked like a model.
Yeah, in the beginning, those were just my stock images of the analysis and stuff.
These are our numbers.
I'm sorry, this is Situit, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So, these are the projects that are in the capital improvement plan, these are the debt numbers that I got from the town, and these are, oops, the, no, I pressed the wrong button, and these are the actual operating costs that we looked at for the enterprise. So, we look, we add on here, we add on revenue, right? So, this is your existing rate structure, if nothing changes, you can see that starting in FY '19, you're going to start to go below costs. Now, some people say that that's a, you know, it's like Ghostbusters, you can't cross the streams, those lines can never cross, but the truth is, if you have reserves, you can, you can do that, you can have a little bit of ebb and flow. So, the next line we add on is the reserves, and, you know, as a goal, this, press the wrong button here, this is the actual reserves, the fund balance, and projected, so I think the last number we had was 16, so we put that in there, and we look at the, you know, the checks and balances from there. This band behind here is where we recommend that they stay, and the bottom number is set at 16% of retained, or 16% of operating costs, it's roughly two months. There's a whole lot of discussion you can have in policy setting on how to set what an appropriate reserve amount is, barring that, that's a good rule of thumb that most people use. Now, the upper limit, honestly, is just set because if I don't have an upper limit, I can't make a band, and I set it at 50%. There's no, again, you could go higher than that if you have a plan for it. So, if your, if your reserves, your retained earnings looks like they're creeping up, DOR will ask you, they will, Department of Revenue will ask you, and you say, well, yeah, here's my capital plan, they say, okay, you know, it's, it's, it's not just stockpiling money, it's preparing. So, when we look here and we see that this number is, this line's below that line, that's exactly the same amount as this has gone down, so you're depleting from those reserves in the years where your revenues are below your expenses. So what this shows is that between FY nineteen and twenty, you basically can't fund the water system. So what we do is we look at, you know, what would a rate structure look like that will keep this line in here, and that's basically the driving principle. So what we did is we developed using your existing rate structure, and, and these are across-the-board increases, so we look at, you know, all the fees you have in your, in your system, it's an across-the-board rate increase, so if we say five percent, it's every single item on your, on your rates goes up five percent, and that's just a, sort of a starting point, if you're, you know, satisfied with your rate structure, the way the costs are distributed and divided, then that's a, you know, a simplified way to look at rate increases. So a couple notes on that before we get into them, again, like I said, rate setting's done on a continuum, this is not a one-and-done deal, at least I believe, and I believe strongly that this time next year, we come back, or Kevin and Sean come back, and they say, okay, we actually added in our actuals, the model's meant to just continue, you can just replace any data with new data or with actual data, and it'll project from there, and you can see, you know, any changes in the costs and those kind of things. So, proposed rates are based on a series of assumptions and projections, ten-year windows used to facilitate long-term planning, and the model should be revisited every year. So having said that, this is what we looked at for water rates. So, again, we're not talking about this tonight or this year, we're talking about this, and what this does is this twenty-five percent rate increase would keep these retained earnings before they were going down, this will keep it at, it's a combination, it's a balance between keeping the retained earnings where you want them, yet trying to balance out the reserves too, so that, for example, if, if you push this back and you say, I want the minimum here, the minimum here, then when I get here, or actually, I'm sorry, the minimum here, we could probably lower that a little bit, this would have to be higher in this year, and then because that expense isn't there, it's going to sort of springboard, so it's a balancing act of finding the right combination of increases, and you can see that the reserves do increase there, but then they get bled down over time to the, finally, they're actually a little bit low, and that's how every one of these goes, the last year always wants like a five percent rate increase, you know, and there's a number of things at play here, so you see these rate-funded items are all in the front, and that's just the nature, the human nature, right, it's a five-year capital improvement plan that they're looking at. So, you'll see, in, you know, if we come back here in five years, these will be, there'll be new projects here, things that they weren't aware of now, or have reached a new level of repair. So, when we talk about the water rates, we always look at rate impacts, because that's very important, and what we do, the way we do that is, we look at a typical residential user, okay, because that's, that's the common denominator, that's usually the people that, are the focus, you know what I mean? So, here, what we mean by typical is, this is a person, or a household, I should say, that uses, the amount of water that a residential user uses is reported by the town every year to the DEP, and that's something that they monitor, and that's what we plugged in, so we put in that typical residential user, I don't show it on here, but I get the household size from the census, and we calculate what their quarterly bills would be like. So, the first one, the first line here is your existing rate structure, so you're looking at, you know, that doesn't change, and also, remember, that's not sustainable, right? So then the new rates come in here, and they present an increase in a quarterly cost, but to help understand it, we look at what is the increase in a quarterly bill, it's twenty-seven dollars, twenty-seven dollars, sixteen dollars and forty-five cents. And then similarly, we look at, what is that on an annual basis, okay, so you see the numbers here, and then on an annual basis, it's a hundred dollars, or a hundred and ten dollars, a hundred and ten dollars, and then sixty-five dollars. And then what I do, on the end, what I started doing, really just as a way to, if you're looking at multiple rate objectives, well, how do they compare over, say, a five-year period? So I look at the total five-year cost, and that's not a rule of thumb, that's not any, in any book, it's just something I do because it helps understand that over five years, that would be, you know, like, six, seven hundred dollars increase, that's that one, two, three, right there. Excuse me, then the last thing we look at is this line on the bottom, is referred to as the residential indicator, it's one of the EPA's tools that they use to assess the economic burden of water and sewer infrastructure, its nexus was long-term control plans and CSO separations, like really, really expensive programs, and what they suggest is that you take the annual cost for these services and divide by the median household income, and in Situate, the median household income is pretty high, I think it's a hundred and one thousand dollars a year, and then you look to see what that ratio is, and if it's two percent for water or sewer individually, that's considered to be a high burden, below one is considered to be a low economic burden, and then in between is medium. So we can see that, you know, through these rate scenarios for water, we're still below And that's really, it's not to say, you know, I can't speak to anybody what's affordable, what's not affordable, but that's just a common indicator that's used. So, looking at sewer, similar thing, existing debt, you're, it looks like you're paying off some debt, adding some new debt, putting in your revenue, and then the same thing, FY twenty being not sustainable. So we develop these, and I'm going a little faster because we went slow through the first one, if you have any questions, please stop me, looking at these rate increases here, and I believe, so we did the same thing here, increase in quarterly bill, increase in annual bill, you know, twenty-four, thirty-nine, sixty, seventy dollars a year, again, you're under the indicator, and I believe, okay, so I did combined rate impacts, because when you're looking at both, that's what people are going to want to know, what does it mean for that person that's going to shift to both? So this is for both water and sewer, increase in annual bill, just skip right down to the good stuff, a hundred and fifty bucks, a hundred and seventy, seventy dollars, a hundred and thirty-seven, and then eighty-five dollars. Again, you know, I'm not, I always feel like that EPA indicator is like, I'm from the government and I'm here to tell you you can afford it, that's, that's not, you know, it's not the intent, but again, that even combined, you know, you're below two percent, which was the indicator for one utility. And then next is the question everybody always asks, is how do we compare to other communities? So, this is very difficult, Sean and I were talking about this before the meeting, and it's as difficult as it is relatively meaningless, because each system is dealing with its own issues, dealing with its own lack of infrastructure funding, or aggressive infrastructure funding, it's very, very difficult to look at rates and see why they're different and why they cost more. But nevertheless, we, we always do this because people basically insist on it. Now, the difference is, or something I want to point out, is that these rates or these costs are from our rate survey that we do every two years. So, because of a legacy issue, the rate surveys have been up for twenty years, they use a high amount of water use that nobody uses, so the thing I just want to point out here is that it's relative comparison, like, it's, it's, your bills are not that high, nobody's bills are that high because nobody uses that amount of water anymore, and we've just kept it the same so you can monitor it over time, and that's just one of the vagaries of the survey, but it still helps relatively, so you can understand that everybody, the survey's built on a hundred and twenty gallons, a hundred cubic feet a year, and you guys use about seventy-five hundred cubic feet a year, so, but it's not a straight prorata, so I didn't want to, anyway. You really can get down a rabbit hole in a thousand ways on these things, you can really get into the data. But we looked at, you know, the combination of water and sewer, and I want to say I didn't just pick four that were higher, I picked four that I thought would be relative to you. To really, truly be relative, you'd have to go into look, do they have their own treatment plants, do they have their own sources, do they just buy water, do they just, you know, pay to dispose water? So, you know, I think the numbers speak for themselves, and then what I did here was I just tried to add, which is also another tricky part, because I can add, this is where I think it'll be in 2019, all these other communities could do rate increases, they could be talking about the same thing tonight, too, that they're all dealing with, you know, you know, you've seen Marshfield in the news, they've had some issues, Mattapoiset's always making improvements, Cohasset, they have a, they're having a similar water issue there, and they have, you know, much higher rates, so. That is the last slide, so I've pushed a lot of information on you, and there's certainly more information that we could provide, so I think, you know, I would, what I thought in the time given that we would provide sort of an overview of the process and the results of the evaluation, so I think I'll just go back to this one, and if anybody has any questions.
Sure, so, hey, Ruth, could I ask you to turn those, thank you very much, Karen?
Couple of questions, I, and I know this is, you know, you're really, you do long-term make sense, but we're only talking in the short-term rate, is there any way that the model makes sense to, especially on the water, water, proposed water rates, to flatten out the difference between fiscal twenty and fiscal twenty-one, so that, I mean, because the model pushes out at levels, and we know that's not, you know, likely, but in order to still appropriately fund a reserve?
Yep.
Goes from twenty-five to twenty to ten, is there any way to soften that curve?
So I can tell by looking at it, that there's a, there's a little room to go here, so you could go, you know, we could look at lowering that a little bit, and to your point, that's going to push higher rate increases later, but I think I understand where you're coming from, the challenge is it won't go down much.
So, to sum it all up, you're basically saying, rates have to be increased, both on the sewer side and the water side, and for us to kind of keep a, at least with the water in the sign, we have to think about increasing for next year, twenty-five percent higher, and sewer, I think you had the combined, but I don't, is about the same or some, something similar?
It's about thirty percent a year combined.
Combined, that we need to think about.
I mean, the part you have to think about is, we've been raising it ten to fifteen percent a year anyways, every year since we've, since we've been doing these projects, so, the delta to the, to what everyone's been expecting is probably not as dramatic as that, because they were, you know, we knew, we have been raising them, I don't know if you know the exact percentages, Nancy, but we've been in a plan since?
A ten and two-nineteens, we haven't done anything for two years.
Yeah, I was going to say, zero, past two years.
So, and we knew we had a third, we knew we had the third phase of the twenty-two million dollar project, and the first two phases were nineteen percent each time we did, we brought those on board, so, just looking at the third phase, that's a big chunk of us, we still have to finance that last, that last.
Okay. The other thing to point out is that the FY nineteen revenue, I reduced the effects of the rate increase by twenty-five percent because we're already into the year, you know what I mean? We can't capture a hundred percent of it, so that, that's been factored in, I won't say I was peppered with questions from Nancy, but I was asked a number of questions, so she wanted to know exactly what I was counting on, so.
Kind of a grasp.
Yes.
Another question?
Yes.
So, the future debt service and, that's projected in this, is based on our current ten-year rolling, or, say, five-year rolling capital plan, is that accurate?
It's based on the five-year capital plan that we had in place, plus everything else that's come forward in the last sixty days. So we've been modeling the model significantly. And this would reflect some of the things that would come forward, does reflect things that would come forward in the special coming, potentially that we got about tonight.
And it's impossible to project either accelerated plant enhancements or that until we do that homework, it can't be.
We tried to capture everything that we, it was already identified in the plan, but as you're aware, things that have developed in the last week or two, there are additional repairs that need to be made, and that, the same situation that the water treatment plant is in now, the sewer treatment plant was in a few years ago, where it was, it was totally reactive, things just happened constantly because of the deferred maintenance that weren't even in anyone's scope of thought, because that hadn't even shown its ugly, read its ugly head yet, and now the same thing's happening with Sean. Will's almost turned the corner that he can be in a proactive space, Sean, the four guys underneath the eight ball, no, you're behind it, he's under, lying to get up from underneath because everything's reactive. It doesn't, it doesn't project the town well, but as everyone has said, you, for us, fifty years of deferred maintenance does catch up with you, and unfortunately, this is where everyone's sitting right now, is trying to do that and trying to incorporate everything that we can see, but in terms of what a town council wants that to be, if you pick up the rock and something crawls, drop the rock.
No, that was, that's my question, I wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that's potentially, that could be there that we just don't know yet, like, when you go to do one project, you pick up the rock, and I'm, oh, I didn't know that was under there, I couldn't see, didn't know that was going to happen.
Sean?
It's getting late, maybe I missed it, new growth, did you take into account?
On the systems, system development?
Customers.
So, yeah, what, and this comes up all the time, personally, unless it's either in planning, in the bag, gonna happen, I don't like to include it because we don't know, you know, because you're essentially, you'd be counting on rate revenue that might not happen. Now, having said that, this is a model, you can put anything you want in there, you know, if you looked at system expansion, sort of intentional system expansion, you could do projections for build-out, and how long we think it would take to get up to full capacity, that kind of thing, and that's all good. What this is, is based on the changes that we've seen over the last five years, so I think it was pretty flat, minor growth for accounts and just a slight decline for consumption. So if there is growth, then that, that can help with the, you know, the equation.
Tony?
I mean, this is identical to what we do in financial forecasting for, for the whole town. One question for you, Nancy, do we bond, what year do we bond stuff in, do we keep it in a band for one year?
The first two phases of the twenty-two million dollar project were in the June two thousand and fifteen general.
No, for the out stuff, for the, for the future stuff.
Right now, we have a fourteen million dollar band outstanding, that we're looking potentially to go along in February.
For the new debt, what's the model for the new debt?
Are you talking about like a amortization schedule, like, over the years?
Yeah, did we use the same model where we're, where we're not bonding it for a year or two after?
Yeah, we're using like about two years after the project.
That's what this is, that's what this is showing.
Sorry, wasn't getting a question.
You know, and every, you said that in the, the project is all the projects, well, we never do all the projects, that's, that's how we make this work every year, is we have a capital plan that has a hundred million dollars of the projects in it, and we can't do them all, so we, sometimes we don't have the bandwidth to do them all, and we certainly don't always have the financial impact to do them all, so, you know, that just gets, some of it gets pushed down the road, which is why those lines meet at the end, and there's not a, that.
Right, and that's just to say, too, that the, by that same token, the capital plan that's built in is also phased and scheduled, and we, you know, we, we talked, Nancy brought that very thing up about bandwidth, and we pushed some projects out, because there was not enough, so I, it's, it's hard to just explain it without going into the weeds.
No, I'm not beating up the, I'm just...
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. But you raised another good point, is I, I, I often am bringing up the fact when people are looking at a project cost, when we're looking at debt, and like, no, the project, you know, they say, okay, that debt's going to hit in FY 19. I said, okay, that means it's under design. It's already, it's building right now. Because it doesn't happen until after the construction is completed, then it gets converted. And this is also, this is not a, this is a planning tool, so it's, it makes some simplifying assumptions. In the amortization for debt, I carry 0.2% of capital, or the principal, the previous year just for, you know, funding activities, you know what I mean? And then it doesn't happen until after the project's done.
So two other points, as Sean brought up, there's always new growth. You know, there's $500,000 of the new growth every year, and it has been for the last 30 years. So that's a number that kind of goes in there as well. The other thing is, we've talked about for the last couple of years is, we've got to generate revenue, particularly on, on the sewer side, on existing pipelines. So we have to, you know, part of our, part of our process here is rate increase, expense reduction, and getting more revenue out of our existing infrastructure. So that means letting people hook up into our system that's already there, so that we don't have to spend money to build a new one. So I don't know, did you have any of that in there, where we would get revenue, you know, 16,000 bucks for everybody that we let hook up into a system that's, that could generate another $100,000 or $200,000 worth of revenue a year to, to generate, you know, to expand our revenue source through that method?
Right. So first, first point is what you just said was a great confirmation of how important the infiltration is, because that's where that capacity comes from. Secondly, what we did not do was we did not evaluate, you know, tie-in fees or, or the system development charges. What we did do is we looked at the revenue that you get from connection fees every year. And, you know, we made between the group of us an educated guess, I guess, is what we thought that would go in the future. So if you decided to make a change on that, and say you change your structure, then to, to, you know, change those fees, then that would be, no, that, that's not reflected. It's based on, you know, sort of everything the same. You know, if we've seen, I don't remember the numbers now, but if it's $30,000 a year, every year, one year was a real high year. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's because of that big project. Again, you don't want to put too many apples in that, you know, cart, because it may not happen again, you know?
I mean, the nuts and bolts of it are the rates have to go up. Does it have to go up 25%? Maybe not 25%, but it's going to have to go up double digits for an extended period of time to pay for the infrastructure improvements that we need. That's, we've known that. We've, we've budgeted that for many, many years. So I think it's great analysis. You know, we just have to look at the numbers and see if there's, if there's tweaking in terms of strategy that we have and potential other revenue sources. Obviously, you always want to budget on, on the conservative side of things. That's what we do all over the place. But we don't want to be so conservative that we raise rates by 25% when we could have done 12.
Any other questions from board? Anybody from the audience have a question? All right. I'm sorry. Yes, Becky, sorry.
Did you look at not standardizing the increase of those awards? Putting a higher increase on higher wear users that are broadening that gap?
So that's a great question. So when we, when we look at these, there's a, there's a number of things you can do. What, what you're, what you're getting into is like a tier analysis, where you look at, you know, histograms of usage by your tiers to see where are people and how many people you, what percentile are you capturing in tier one, tier two, tier three? And then honestly, even more, you know, sort of art and science, I guess, is what should those tier differentials be in terms of cost? So to answer your question, no, we did not look at that. You know, the model's set up to look at three alternatives. Usually, they're all across the board. We could do a more in-depth analysis, and I think that that's something to talk about and to, to explore. So just real briefly on, on tiers. No matter how many you actually have, it's really three categories. It's the, you know, responsible use that you need to, you know, and then the middle is discretionary use. Maybe you want to have a small garden or whatever. And then there's the wasteful use. And, you know, there's a whole bunch of discussion around how effective rates are at conservation. Some people want a green lawn. They don't care. Just bill me, you know, and, but that, that's, it's a, and then you get into price elasticity and all these really interesting discussions.
And that's our current system.
Right. So this would be maybe broadening the gap between those tiers, so that there would be a higher increase for higher users?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we do now. So, yeah. Yeah, you can make it, yeah.
Across the board, but maybe 25% for the high water users and 10 for the responsible.
There was like 2% of the people used 20% of the water or something. I remember seeing that statistic.
And then there's another number two about how that water use changed with the increase in rates. That was very interesting.
Yeah, the water and sewer are generally considered to be inelastic, meaning people don't change their behavior based on cost. Or if it is, it's a temporary blip, you know?
Any other questions? Gordon?
Especially about communication before was interesting, but new water lines. If we see an 18, 20, 25% increase, I don't know how we get this information to the residents. If they could understand this, they could understand why we need a 20, 25% increase. I think it's going to be your job to try to get that information out to the people. You know, a lot of them are not going to like it, but I think if they could understand it, I mean, this makes perfect sense.
Yeah. Well, one thing is certainly, we're going to need to put it up on the website. But that in and of itself, we need to drive people to it, so they can have a better understanding of what exactly has been going on and what we're going to be looking at, because rates are going to have to be increased. And of course, that's a good question. People might not have the time to sit down and go through this presentation and understand it. But we could also maybe try to drive them back to YouTube and also with SCTV and our Facebook page, so that people could watch it and get a sense, because Mike, you did a great presentation. It's much, it's much more complicated than many people realize.
There's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah. So I guess the question I have from the board, oh, does somebody else have a question? Yeah, Nancy.
What'd you say? I'm sorry?
Phil Stuffer explaining it.
Yeah.
Oh, Phil Stuffer.
So at this point, I know we, we were listed for a vote. I think, would the board prefer to like digest this for one meeting and then talk about what might be the suggestion? Or is that Kevin, a part of your next part of the presentation? I, I don't know. We need to know maybe, what are we talking about if we're going to increase it? And then I think, you know, the idea, and Becky's point, I think we've talked about it before. Do we just do it across the board? Do we vary it to the users who are using it, you know? I don't know. Because I, there is a bifurcation between rate users for people who are using it when they're not supposed to be, and, you know.
That's a great thought. I hadn't thought of that, but who are those customers that are at the, as users? Those are restaurants, you know, Omara.
I was thinking, do you want us to point fingers?
No, 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 but I'm just, you know, be, my point is, be careful. I'm not, I'm not thinking about the green lawns. I'm thinking about the restaurants. And, you know, do we really want to, you know, hit them that much harder? Unless I'm missing something.
I don't know. That's one of the things we need to know.
Yeah, I'd rather discuss it at the next meeting, because there's a lot of information here to absorb. And I definitely don't want this particular version going up on our website right away, because it's not clear that the beginning slides are a model and the ending slides are accurate. So I don't want to confuse people seeing all different numbers. You know, we just need to make sure we fix that a little bit before it goes out to the public.
Take a look. There's some slides you hadn't heard that wasn't a part of my packet here, but.
Yeah, I apologize. The, just mechanically, I duplicate that slide like 12 times, and I delete a piece off of each one, and sometimes I end up with an extra one in there, so.
It's fine.
I didn't change any content, but I did, I, I noticed a couple when I went through them.
So if you could, what's that?
This is the abridged version. You want to go for another hour.
It's okay. What I would suggest then is if there's one that you can maybe, I don't want to say redact, but kind of revise, so that we could, that's content-specific to the town, as opposed to some of the slides that you had that were just kind of generic.
Oh, oh, just take them out?
Yeah, that's all.
Sure.
Because otherwise, people are going to say, wait a minute, where are these figures are going?
You know, that's funny, because that happens. People say, wait, we don't have that. I can't change that every time.
I can only imagine.
No.
But let us also say, this is a public document, so if anybody wants to see this one, you can see this one.
Good point. Otherwise, we'd criticize on that end. But I, I think the best thing to do is then see what we can do about circling back again on a month, not a month, our next meeting to talk about rates. And probably need some information, Nancy, for the past, what we've been doing and the way it's structured. Does that make sense? Any other questions? If not, then Mike, Kevin, Sean, Will, thank you very much for the presentation. Nancy, you also. Well done. Tell you what I'm going to do, folks. I'm going to take a five-minute break, because we've been sitting here for two and a half hours. And we'll get right back and see what we can do to wrap up the next agenda items, okay? Our next one is going to be the energy usage rebate. Nancy, so you'll be up. Folks, we're back in session. Just want to say thank you for hanging out. It's almost quarter of 10. I'd like to kind of plow through the remaining agenda items. Nancy, you're here for an energy usage rebate.
Yes. So we have received some sizable energy incentive rebates from National Grid and ComStar for the two new buildings and the renovated library. To date, we have received $272,373.48. These are for the town building energy-efficient buildings. There is one that we have not yet received, which is Columbia Gas for the Public Safety Complex. And we, I'm still waiting to hear from the architect if that should be forthcoming. We did make an application, but I don't know if everything has been satisfied with that. So the question now rises as to what to do with the, the funds that we've received. The Department of Revenue requires that these funds be given back to the taxpayer to reduce the debt impact on the taxpayer. So last year, we received the first one, which was 5,000, just over $5,000 for the library. And that was reflected on the tax recap for fiscal 18 and reduced the impact to the taxpayer. And I know Tony's going to ask me, so I'll let him know. The average taxpayer got a benefit of 69 cents, so that was a flag. We didn't really run up the poll on that one. This other particular amount that we have left, which is approximately $266,000, the board needs to decide how it wants to give those funds back to the taxpayer by the reduction in the tax rate. There's basically two options. One, we can do a one-time benefit. So on this next tax bill, fiscal 19, we'll take the entire amount and reduce the taxes by that amount that would impact the taxpayer from the debt exclusion repayment. Or we could apportion it over the remaining 22 years of the debt. The one-time relief would mean you would give tax, the average homeowner, a $33.20 piece of relief. If you apportioned it, you're looking more along the range of $1.49 to $2 over the next 22 years each year. So the question before you is, how would you like to give that back to the taxpayer all at once or over the next 22 years?
So. Mara, how would you like to do it?
All at once.
Sonya, how would you like to do it?
Is it debt for 20 years?
We have 22 years remaining on the, on the bond, yes.
For this project that got this rebate?
For these three, yes. It's all three projects that have a piece of this.
So I'd do it over the 22 years?
We'd do $2 a year.
And we have yet to see the Public Safety, but that's not going to be that great, is it?
If we, the, the way that the motion is structured, if it comes in before the tax rate is set, we'll just roll it into it. If it comes in later, do the same thing. I probably wouldn't ask you, because I don't expect, come back before you. Excuse me for not, that was rather rudely put. I wouldn't come back before you, because it would be so de minimis that we just reflected in the next tax recap.
How do you feel, Sean?
All at once.
So my question is, if we do it all at once, time value of money, that's great, $33 taken care of. If it's for the next 20 years, then does the, do we gain interest as a taxpayer? Or is it just basically the value, dollar values diminished each and all years?
The dollar value, yes. Sorry, Tony, I'd do it all at once.
I don't care.
Can I ask a question?
No. Yes.
I know, I don't know why I ask you that. I have a question. Isn't there a cost to doing it over 20 years? You know, $2 as far as a resource and administrative costs?
There is an administrative cost, because you need to remember it, that it has to be done every year. So as part of our budget vote now, you see that $53,931. That's from an MSBA repayment that we got probably 10 years ago, and it's got like another eight or nine years to go.
To go.
So you just have, someone would have to remember that for the next 22 years added on, you would hope it would be reflected on the DE1, that someone would see it, but the DE1 is net numbers. Other words, I have a job for 22 years. If you want to make sure that two bucks goes back every year, guaranteed.
No.
Will there be other rebates on this debt?
No.
Doesn't matter. I don't care.
Motion?
Motion, please.
Move to apply the $266,837.98 in energy incentive rebates received and any further rebates from the construction of the new middle school, renovated library, new public safety complex, and a one-time reduction of the debt burden for these projects on the FY 2019 real estate tax bill.
Motion by Ms. Curran, second by Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, 4-0. And that's it.
Thank you.
Nancy, thank you very much. That's great news. You know, I, I feel like we need to publish this. I feel like we should say, look, okay, you're getting a rebate for all the green stuff, the initiatives that we did from like five years ago. Yeah. Oh, it's not?
No.
This is just a separate energy incentive program.
Wow.
Because we replaced older systems. I mean, the systems were in the older buildings.
So that would have been through a grant, or was that?
It's a program through the.
MSBA?
So we can see energy rebates for the ESCO projects as well usually, and those just close out to general funds. So they come through in free cash.
How much was the debt?
On the projects, we issued $50 million on the middle school. We've issued 17.2 long-term on the Public Safety. We have two other pieces that are in short-term, $1.2 million. And we've only issued $5 million on the library long-term. We have a $3.2 billion piece in the band.
So this is what, like a 3% rebate? No, I didn't hear.
Go back to 10 o'clock, Michael.
Yeah, I didn't hear the. All right. It's, yeah, it's essentially a single-digit rebate for, for doing a big project.
Sorry, we'll take it.
Good news.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Okay, let's move on to community choice aggravation, aggregation, excuse me. Lisa, I know, I'm sorry. It's 10 of 10 at night by mistake.
Aggravation?
I said aggravation.
I did. Lisa Scanlon and Lisa Bertola, thank you ladies for waiting this long with Sustainable South Shore. And you were supposed to be on at 8:50, and it's two hours, it's an hour later. Good evening again. We're back.
Good evening.
To be honest, I'm not sure why we're here, because we've submitted petitions with over 120 signatures by residents to put these articles on the warrant for special town meeting. But we hope we have your endorsement for this. We've been before the Board of Selectmen three times now. We've been before Jim Boudreau, Town Administrator. We've been with John and Mara privately to talk about how this works. Many cities and towns in the Commonwealth are doing this already, including the city of Boston, Town of Rockland, Nantucket, the Cape. Massachusetts is one of six states in the country that has this legislation that allows us to go out to bid for our energy. It reduces rates. It also allows within that savings, by reducing the rates, to insert more Class 1 renewable energy credits, which increases demand for renewables, creates jobs for renewable energy in the, in the state.
And increasing renewables of electricity is the single largest way that we can reduce our carbon footprint as a town.
Right. So, you know, I've been to many science fairs and schools. I have three children, have lived in the town over 20 years, worked with the town before on renewable energy projects. We are the poster child town for rising sea levels and climate volatility. No matter who you are, that's just, it's just in our face every winter and every summer, now with high temperatures. There's a minority of people that will argue about that. We have to do more. And I think we've always led as a town on the green community front. We did it with our municipal energy. So now it's time to look for ways for residents and businesses to get greener. And honestly, there's rate relief involved as well. and businesses to get greener. And honestly, there's rate relief involved as well, so it seems like a win-win on many fronts. It's a vetted process. There's a broker that gets paid through the rates themselves. It doesn't cost the town anything other than some time and maybe a committee or some personal resources in terms of attention and leadership, but we're hopeful that we can at least start the process and put it out for a vote publicly, get the Board of Selectmen to endorse going down the path of exploring it. Again, these two articles are simply to give the Board of Selectmen and town officials, DPW, Town Administrator, the power to contract and look into this from an administrative standpoint. And then, secondly, Sustainable South Shore, we hope that some of those rate savings, if there are any, could be used to include more green power and make us more sustainable as a community and increase our demand for renewables beyond the state mandate, which is right now, I think around 12 or 13%.
12%.
So, I can continue to provide examples of other towns, how they're doing it, but the beauty of this is Cituate can craft it the way they want. We can set our parameters. We can say it has to be affordable for ratepayers. We can say, you know, whatever we want in terms of parameters, and that can be decided down the road. This is really just to start the ball rolling and give the authority to the board and town officials to do what's necessary to do that exploring. And there's no contract to be signed until there's unanimous or majority vote that you approve of a contract that meets everyone's needs. It takes time because the language has to be approved by the state agencies. So, there's a process involved, and even the Metropolitan Area Planning Council folks who are experts in this say to approve it at this fall town meeting would be ideal because then to go out to bid in the summer or spring when the rates are lower is a perfect time to get better rates, more competitive rates. So, it, you know, if it feels like a rush in terms of process, again, this is just a green light, giving the Board the authority to do this. And in terms of ultimately the approvals from the state agencies and then the bidding, it would be perfect to be looking for power rates in the summer and when they're cheapest. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we have other resources of people that can answer questions, but...
Tony?
Yeah, well, I appreciate you coming back three times. I think you know why you've come back three times because we have to think about it. There's nothing that you've said in terms of the results of your project that we disagree with. We, all of us support green energy as much as you possibly could, as you can tell by all the awards the town has gotten in that time period. You know, our problem, my problem, and the thing that we need to think about as long as we have, is we are forcing people, all the citizens of this town, to change their electric provider. And the way that they get out of it is, oh, we are. We're saying, we're changing your plan from A to B, and the way that they get out of it is they have to call up and opt out of it. And that's the part that we've, that's the only part that I'm having, and I believe the board is having a problem doing, saying, okay, you know, Mrs. Smith, you now have energy, you're now paying the bill because Tony Vignani decided that you're getting it from Greensmith. And it may be less, it may be more, depending on what the temperature of the board is at that time that votes the contract. And in order for them to get out of it, they have to call up the people and say, no, I don't want you to change me. That's the only thing that I have a problem with. I like the initiative. I like the green aspect of it. I fully support all the things that they're doing. That's the one thing that's hanging me up, and I've just needed to think about it, and I think the rest of the board has had to think about it as long as we have right now to make a decision because we take it seriously.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. It's a great concern, and it's a valid question. The only explanation I can give about why it's structured this way, why it is actually, this is how the program works, not just for Cituate, and we haven't come up with this, this is how it's structured, is because statistically, if it's not the default that switches over to this program that you work long and hard to bid and contract and get to meet, align the goals of the community, if you make it optional, you get at best 10% of the people opting into it. And one could argue, I think very strongly, that National Grid is not a supplier. National Grid is mandated to provide a default service for anyone that doesn't go out and already shop their own energy program. Anyone who has an existing contract with something other than the basic service through National Grid, that contract would remain untouched even with this community choice aggregation. It is only the people that have never researched, never looked into their energy program, and let the National Grid default service be their basic service. Those are the only people that would switch over to community choice aggregation, which actually comprises about 90% of the people because no one, only 10% do opt out for some other program. So, it's, and that's why the suppliers bid aggressively for towns that do this and get their rates down because they know they're getting 90% of a population.
Right.
And so, the rates are very competitive. And if the, if the goals are to make it affordable for most people and healthier in terms of community carbon footprint, I would argue that's, that's a good reason to interfere in the default. That is a noble gesture on the part of the leadership of the town to say, and not only that, there's some consumer protections, like there's a lot of people peddling energy programs out there that are less honest and have variable rates or penalties if people break contracts. So, this would actually be a sound two, three-year contract that the town works hard to get in place. It's, it's a cleaner energy, and it's affordable. One would argue that that's much better than the default with National Grid, which reflects fossil fuel subsidies and things that people have no idea go into it anyway. You're being advocates for something better than the default. That's another way of looking at it. Yes, it's interference, but it's interference with a noble goal and a positive outcome.
It's also, the biggest thing in my mind is that it becomes community choice, that it's our community who is deciding our default versus a for-profit, big company, National Grid deciding what our default is.
Well, it's not the community.
Someone has to decide.
It's going to be the five people that sit up here.
Well...
And we're going to be, we're going to be deciding...
Community votes, though, to what the parameters will be, and then you do a committee or, you know, whatever it's going to be.
It's a competitive bid process where there's rules and formal format in it, like in any RFP, that have to be followed, where you're looking at criteria and based on, you know, what we ask for, competitive rates and the mix of power being somewhat cleaner.
Wow.
I'm in support of this. I think it's worth exploring, and that's what we're asking to do at this point at special town meeting. So, I don't have any other questions. I've spoken to the Lisas, sorry, you know, quite a few times as well. They've been here for quite a few times, so...
So, you have your signatures. So, will you get up and speak on this?
Sure. Yes, absolutely.
I think that's kind of a win-win situation, but I'd just tell you where I stand. Tony said it very well, and I agree with everything he said, but the fact that you, the two of you are going to go up in front of town meeting is maybe even better. If you can convince the people at town meeting to go forward, that's, I think that's more honest, more open than one of us. You know where I'm coming from? You know?
No, I know what you're saying. I get it.
You know, I mean, you, this is near and dear to you guys.
Because it becomes a community effort.
Right.
Well, I mean, what's near and dear to me is I have three children and ultimately, you know...
We all feel the same way.
We all, we all.
I mean, I feel like the imperative, if it's not obvious to you, I, you know, I guess we're special in that it feels very imperative and obvious to us, but it, to me, it is the single most powerful thing we could do as a community to change the carbon footprint. When I see the damage, and when I have friends being evacuated off Lighthouse Lane, Rebecca Road, every winter, when I see the $5 million price tag on storm damages, and when I heard the Metropolitan Area Planning Council at the recent resilience forum say, we can't just mitigate, we can't just repair seawalls, we can't just do these short-term things, I'm hearing tonight about infrastructure, about our water and our other, other utilities that get affected by storm damage. To me, this is staring us in the face. We can do better as a community, and we, you know, it's not going to come from, at this point in time, local action carries a lot of weight. I just feel like the leadership is imperative in this, in this, in this area.
So, here's my thoughts, and the board can say what they, what they want to do. The board will take a vote on the article, support or against it. We're sure, one of our members right now. I'm in support of it. So, we can vote it up tonight, depending on how the board wants to feel, or we can wait and another meeting do it so that you have a full board. And I was going to ask my board, what would you like to do?
So, is that all we're doing tonight is voting approval of it?
I don't think we have to, although it's...
Is it already on the warrant as a citizen's petition?
Citizen's petition, as long as they have the ballot number of signatures, it has to be reviewed, then it's on the warrant.
It's on the warrant, but it's one of the things about whether we support it or not.
Well, so, so they get them reviewed, and everything goes well. We vote it up, then draw them...
Voting in favor of it.
No, I know, yeah, but, but now, are you going to still get up? Or would...
Yes.
Are you going to, I'm just going to use you for an example. Are you going to get up and it'll be us, are you going to present the argument?
It would probably be something where one of the board members would get up and say, Board of Selectmen was in favor, or the Board of Selectmen was not in favor of the vote, blah, 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 blah. And probably that, at that point, I would suggest, let's turn it over for further discussion, and then, if need be, the board can get up and talk further on it.
That introduction is really all we're asking, is that you could say that out of five...
Well, we really want the introduction if they're going to be supportive. We don't really want the introduction.
No, yeah, well, obviously, but your endorsement would mean a lot.
Obviously, yeah, I know. And I think it'd be best...
And we're hopeful that you would, you would give it to us. And again, he...
Well, to Sean's point, he says, your endorsement is not necessarily, that's what I was giggling when he's saying, you want to be the presenters, because sometimes when we present, we don't necessarily convince, so, you know, it just depends. But in this issue, I think you're well-versed on it and certainly can address any questions that are raised from the audience at the time.
Absolutely.
But I leave it to the board. What would you like to do?
I, two, two quick points. One, when we get before town meeting, we give both sides of the story regardless of the issue. So, so, our support is, is, you know, just fact, factual. And second, I say we vote it tonight.
All right.
I agree. I mean, they've been here three times.
I'll entertain a motion then.
How about?
I mean, the motion is to add community choice aggregation to the fall special town meeting warrant.
Motion. Move to add community choice aggregation to the fall special town meeting.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Want to post?
All right.
We...
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you. All right. Thank you for waiting around.
Please feel free to ask questions in the meantime.
I don't get that motion.
Well, in other words, it's supportive. They're on it, but it's another way that, you know, we can put it on. All right. So, let's move on to our next item, which happens to be Kevin. A DPW contracts, well 17A completion phase three for $253,000. And then, we also have the Eastern Salt Company for $48.45 per ton, which is obviously getting ready for the winter.
Yep. First contract is for the green sand filter. We talked about it earlier. We had broken it up in phases because it was expensive contract-wise, and this is for the final section to complete the, complete the process and get ready to go to bid.
Perfect. Questions at all from the board? Seeing none? Is there a motion here? Let me see.
Yes. Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract for the design and permitting of the green sand filter to at well 17A to tie in bond for $253,000.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, the second one is, this is the annual, this is what we're getting, salt cheap.
Yeah, I hate to even talk about it now, but it's something that we're going to be starting to fill up. It's a salt that we use for assaulting the roads. Bids went out this year. Last year, we were at $64.98. This year, we came in with a price of $48.45, so it's a significant savings. We're pretty excited about that.
That's great.
Questions from the board?
Motion.
Any questions from the audience on salts? Seeing none. Motion?
That the Board of Selectmen award the contract to purchase road salt from Eastern Salt Company of Lowell, Mass. for $48.45 per ton.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, we'll try and keep our salt shed as full as possible this year. As we deplete it, we'll try to keep it up for, we can save almost $20 a ton. I'd like to go in next year with, with some backup salt.
Don't have to use it.
So, how much, a quick question, Kevin. If you go through it, how many times generally to empty the shed out? I know it depends on the storms, like, you know, average-wise.
Well, I mean, yeah, it depends on the winter. I think the total shed carries somewhere between $2,200 to $2,400. I think last year, we did right around 3,000 ton of salt we used up. So, it just, just depends on the winter.
I was just wondering, like, with the transfer station, there's such a large area, certainly in the corner back near the, the tower, the cell tower, has it ever had an opportunity to build and build some more so you could...
Make more?
Yep.
Well, you have to be careful of your groundwater readings because we've got groundwater wells all around there because of the...
Gordon Gekko, you trying to buy futures in salt?
You did say groundwater, right?
Yes, ground.
So, I'm making sure you didn't say brown water here.
Groundwater, groundwater.
Okay. Well, just a thought.
Need to reach back a lot.
Yeah, no, not on that one. All right. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, I guess this is the municipal employee disclosure for the Cituate Recreation. This is somebody who is working, must be somebody who works for the town in another capacity.
Art teacher.
It's an art teacher. Okay. And so, consequently, in order for them to work with the rec department, this has to be a disclosure pursuant to chapters 268A. Is there any other explanation we need other than motion?
No.
Nope. Move that the Board of Selectmen, as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, has reviewed the disclosure form for Paul Papadonis as a municipal employee who seeks to provide personal services to Cituate Recreation. The exception under Section Paragraph 20B is approved for municipal employee Paul Papadonis.
Second.
This is motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the National Recovery Month proclamation. All right. Seeing that I was the former clerk, I'll be happy to...
I have it if you want.
Do you have it? Oh, please. Actually, you're the vice chair.
I'm the next Lois on the totem pole. So, do you want to tee it up or no? Okay. So, we have a Recovery Month proclamation. Whereas the Town of Cituate dedicated resources to establish a community coalition dedicated to the prevention of substance abuse disorder, the Cituate Facts Coalition in 2012, which was further recognized by a federal grant in September 2014. Whereas the Cituate Facts Coalition implements strategies to reduce rates of substance abuse among local youth and strengthens collaboration among partners within the community and across the Commonwealth. Whereas, South Shore Peer Recovery, a grassroots organization that began when Cituate community members in recovery organized to provide more support for individuals and family members in or seeking recovery, was founded in Cituate in 2015 and opened a recovery center at 51 Cole Parkway in March 2018. Whereas, these organizations partner with the Cituate Police Department, Cituate Public Schools, and other municipal stakeholders to reduce stigma and to improve prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery support for all. Whereas, for 29 years, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration has designated September as National Recovery Month to increase awareness and understanding of mental and substance abuse disorders and celebrate the individuals living in recovery. Further, the Town of Cituate celebrates the 2018 Recovery Month theme and joins, quote, "The Voices for Recovery to Invest in Health, Home, Purpose, and Community to Explore How Integrated Care, a Strong Community Sense of Purpose, and Leadership, contributes to Effective Treatments That Sustain the Recovery of Persons with Mental and Substance Abuse Disorders." The 2018 observance also aims to increase awareness and encourage audiences to take advantage of the increased dialogue around behavioral health needs and the increased emphasis on tackling our nation's opioid, opioid crisis. Sorry. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Cituate, designate September 2018 as Recovery Month, signed this 4th of September 2018, the Town of Cituate Board of Selectmen.
Well done. Thank you.
That's great.
Going to move on to new business. First one under new business is discuss the vote to close the fall special town meeting warrant. Happy to entertain a motion to close it.
Move the Board of Selectmen close the warrant for the fall special town meeting to be held on November 14. to be held on November 14, 2018? Second.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the next one, it's a...
Mr. Bjorklund brought his back.
He did.
So whether they're all correct signatures or not, we won't find out till tomorrow, but he brought his back.
Does he, can he just give it to you?
She asked me to turn it in before you closed the warrant, so we'll have to send it down to the clerk now to check the signatures, but as long as he's turned it into the town before the warrant is closed, I think we have to take it.
Clerk's not there anyways, because she's not voting properly.
Right.
So the next are our number of one-day liquor licenses.
Liquor motion.
Please.
Will the Board of Selectmen approve one-day wine and malt liquor licenses, two lavishly done for an event at the Lucky Finn Cafe on September 8, 2018, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM?
Second.
Oh, motion, I was, I thought you were going to do...
All right, I will. All right. Hold on to that, Tony. Secondly, Reeve Restaurant for an event at Situate Maritime Center on September 14, 2018, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Ellen McKenzie for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on September 15, 2018, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Taylor Made Bartending for an event at St. Mary's Parish Center on September 15, 2018, from 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM. Taylor Made Bartending for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on September 21, 2018, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Reeve Restaurant for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on September 22, 2018, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And finally, the Sandal and Chef for an event at the Situate Maritime Center on September 23, 2018, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. Can I move on to correspondence? I'm trying to get my computer up to date here. There's one correspondence from the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of State Treasurer, Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. Notice of Accepted Offer in Compromise, Front Street Liquor, Doing Business as Situate Package Store, Captain Cappies or something? Is that what it's called? This is to advise you that the alcoholic or ABCC has accepted your offer in compromise in lieu of suspension in the amount of $1,160. Further, you're advised that the notice of suspension for two, period of two days, to serve in two days held in abeyance, is reconsidered and compromised by a fine. The notice of license suspension is rescinded.
I think that's terrible.
Can I ask you a question?
So they...
Did we suspend this license?
No.
No, it was stated.
Right.
State did it, and they paid him $1,160 to be able to get out of it. It's a second offense.
They paid $1,100 and got out of serving minors.
I thought I missed it. I thought, well, you might have suspended it when I...
Make sure they don't show up here. I'll tell you right now, that's not, not getting out of that.
That's ridiculous.
I'm very disappointed in hearing that.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
All right, so getting back to our policy, let's, let's say it does happen. Is that strike number one, or is it strike number three?
No, you can, you can use those. You can use those, yeah.
Previous violations, just because they didn't come to you, they are violations that have been adjudicated.
And our policy has been pretty good. Third time was...
Didn't we just change it?
A number of suspensions.
Jim or Lorraine, does this happen? They can just go to the ABCC? I've never seen a fine.
ABCC did the sting, I believe, when they were gone, right?
Yeah, it wasn't ours.
The ABCC administered the punishment. You can have your own hearing and, you know, administer your own punishment. Chances are, they're going to appeal to the ABCC and it's going to overturn for double jeopardy that they've already given them something, so it's difficult.
We've never used it in the past.
But you can, in my opinion, when you have them before you, if they have a subsequent violation, that you're adjudicating the fact that they've had previous violations with the ABCC would come into that.
Okay. Are they, is this in their file, Lorraine?
Yes, I put it in my file.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other correspondence? I see one here saying that people are invited to the special, what is it? I got it. North-South River?
Special Congresswoman Nikki Songas.
Rededication?
Celebration, yeah.
I'm waiting for it to fill back up again. I don't have it. Everybody got it?
The date of that?
Yeah.
September 23.
All right. And I should probably read, what's the recycling grant?
Jim covered that in the beginning.
Perfect. Then the seaside at Situate invitation, groundbreaking, AKA Toll Brothers. Am I know what that is? Like to formally invite you to the groundbreaking ceremony updating seaside Situate community. The ceremony will take place at the current entrance of the site on Thursday, September 6 at 10:00 AM. So that's two days from now, 10:00 AM. All are welcome. Then the other one says, correspondence, final plan for West Cork. So delegation from West Cork is coming over. I'm looking for the dates here.
The 18th, I think, through the 20th of September?
Yes.
Couple weeks.
So...
John, can I ask Lorraine a question, please?
Yeah.
Lorraine, can we get an update on who, which one of us signed up for which thing, so we can plug in?
Yeah, I'm going to resend it. I believe a much better font.
Okay, that'd be great.
And then I think we can look at it.
We can plug ourselves in. Okay, perfect.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
I mean, do you want it to be like a spreadsheet on people?
Sure. Something, just so that we know where, we have coverage for everything. Yeah, that would work, just for us. Yeah.
That'd be great.
Any updates for other business?
I think we still have some correspondence.
With the minutes?
Oh, we do.
That was distributed to you.
We lost our clerk. Can we kick that to next week, next time?
Oh, the Mass Works.
Okay, what is it? I'm missing it. You got it?
We have a copy of a letter that Senator O'Connor sent to the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development in support of the Situate Municipal Sewer System Capacity Restoration Project. So that's just copying us to let us know that he is in support of our request for funding for the Mass Works grant. So that's great.
For a grant of 2.2 million.
Yeah, it's a $2.2 million grant from Mass Works.
All right. Other business? Anybody?
No.
No.
Sean?
No.
Quickly, I do have a few. One is, I was down at Hummer Rock last night, or yesterday, and I happened to see the lifeguards. They did a great job. It's a tribute to all the lifeguards for the town, for all the beaches, but this was in Hummer Rock, and it was kind of sad to see them leave, but they're great. They were there until 5 o'clock, when they finally walked off the beach, and that took care of the summer, which was sad. The other thing I thought was really interesting, Friday, I came to meet with Jim, and it happened to be touch and chock day.
What a crowd.
This is like, what, sixth time or fifth time? I can't remember when we first started, but what I found interesting was, when we first did it, we kind of had old decrepit trucks that were just kind of buffed up, and now we have quite a fleet out there with little trucks, excavators, skid steer, you know, the whole, the whole gambit. Bus, although I didn't see a fire truck. But I have to say, I was really impressed. I thought it was well-attended. The kids were blowing the horns. Jim brought his kids, you know, and I think Jim actually got some photographs from, you know...
Tried the drone.
Tried the drone out there. But that's a great event, and it seems like it's grown every year, to the point that it's known on Friday before Labor Day, and I think people should bring their kids or grandkids. It just is really great. It kind of made me very sad...
I went by, it was packed.
It was packed when I walked out of here, and it made me sad to think about my sons who loved the trucks and loved going and getting animal...
You have some participation from South Situate also.
It's always good. We always like including South Situate, you know? It's our future plans of taking over South Situate. Finally, I just wanted to say, I was at the Situate Beach Association's annual Labor Day Parade. It was a great event, well-attended. The weather was perfect, and I have to say, it's these kind of community events that make our town unique and makes it really nice to live here, and I was very impressed by it. Last but not least, Situate takes on in football this Friday night. I believe it's home.
Were you out of it?
South Situate, AKA Norwell. So the Sailors will be looking to defeat the Clippers, which I understand they will, but we'll see what happens.
Is that an accurate report, Tony?
That's accurate.
I know. Our sports reporter has been replaced.
I got it.
I don't know if I trust the new reporter.
Got to make sure it's the right place. I think it is in Situate, though.
It is.
The legislature has posted the election result.
And the official result is?
I don't believe it's official yet, but Patrick Kearney, 3442. Sean Costello, 3314.
Wow, congratulations to Patrick.
Official, and he will go against Ed O'Connell on the Republican side, and Nathan Powell as the independent.
First time Situate person has...
Advanced.
Advanced. That's quite an accomplishment.
Congratulations.
Interesting to see what happens. Finally, I think we have some meeting minutes to approve.
Shut down.
Did you have the number? I shut it down.
How about, somebody moved to accept the minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on August 21, 2018?
Some moved.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think the last thing is motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn and sign documents?
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, folks. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Documents.